Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular Tuesday, June 6th, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let the record reflect that four of five commissioners are present, Commissioner Luer being absent, and the meeting is called to order. The first item on our order of business this evening is a moment of silence, and this is generally a very unstructured moment, but I might suggest that those of you who are comfortable might take this opportunity to send support and solidarity with the victims and the population of Manchester and London this evening. So with that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. If you'll stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. We have a moment here that's set aside for planning commissioner announcements. Are there any announcements from the commissions this afternoon?
I do. I wanted to encourage people to find out about and perhaps join or contribute money to an organization called the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance, which is trying to acquire open space in and around Morro Bay, and in particular, the 3,000-acre Chervon Track, which is just east of the northern limits of Morro Bay. And the website would be mbopenspace.org.
My grandson was in third grade and informed me that last day of school is Thursday, and on Wednesday they're having a beach party in the morning, so be careful with loose grommets running around by San Jacinto there, and they'll be coming back around 2:30 or something. So just take a little extra time getting to work or anywhere else we're going.
Very good. Thank you. Michael?
That's what I want to announce. It's more for the general public, but it's more specifically for the people in the administrative areas. Cal Poly is going to have a climate action summit conference in late August, and this is where you can learn what the thinking is that goes into each of our climate action plans that all the jurisdictions have, including our own city.
Excellent. Okay, this is a time set aside for public comment, and it's a time where members of the public can come forward and speak to us on basically any topic. I will note that we're going to change the agenda a little bit this evening for staffing purposes, and we're going to move Item C1, the water allocations, to the first item on the agenda. So any of you who would like to comment on B1 and B2 will have public comment during those items also. But anyone who would like to comment now rather than later, so that you don't have to sit here and listen to the water issues, we can certainly take that comment at this point as well. So I'll open it up for members of the public. Please come forward, give us your name, and let us know what's on your mind. Okay, I see none, so we will bring it back to the commission and move on to our consent calendar, which this evening consists of the planning processing list and approval of minutes from our April 4th and April 18th meeting. Are there any comments on the consent calendar, any items that you'd like to pull? Seeing none, do we have a motion then to adopt the consent calendar?
A move we adopt the consent calendar.
A second, do we adopt the consent calendar?
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting the consent calendar as presented, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay, getting down to business then, wading into the weeds. We're going to start with Item Number C1, which is the 2016 Annual Water Report and Recommendation for allocations of Water Equivalency Units. This is a discussion item, a new business item, which will eventually result in a recommendation to the City Council for further action. And I believe that Damaris Hansen is with us from the Environmental Programs to give us our staff report on this.
Thank you. Yes. So tonight, we're going to go over the annual water report and the allocation of the 2017 water equivalency units. So first, I'll give a summary of the annual water report, go through the water conservation, kind of where we've been and where we are now, the current water supply and the historic water production, and then we'll move to the water equivalency units, kind of a history of the water equivalency units, a summary of the 2016 activities, and the WEU offset program, and then conclusions and recommendations. So with water conservation, starting back in 2014, Governor Brown declared an emergency due to the drought, and he voluntarily asked that the state reduce water consumption by 20%. At that time, the city implemented the mandatory severely restricted water supply requirements. In 2015, the State Water Resources Control Board implemented mandatory tiered-based water conservation, and at that time, Morro Bay's requirement was to reduce production by 12%. Morro Bay reduced our water production by 13.5% compared to 2013. All the water conservation compares back to the year 2013. It's a baseline year. And then in 2016, the State Water Resources Control Board allowed the urban water suppliers to replace their assigned percentages with a stress test approach. The stress test approach made the cities or the water purveyors to provide, show that they could provide water for the next three years with the extended drought. So Morro Bay conducted the stress test and reduced our mandatory water conservation to 0%. And the city continued to reduce water consumption by 21% compared to 2013 for 2016. And in current 2017, Governor Brown lifted the drought emergency stating water conservation must remain a way of life. And 2017, Morro Bay will be receiving our full allotment of state water for 2017. So our water supplies, our state water is a major water supplier, so 96% of our water in 2016 came from state water. And in April, the Department of Water Resources informed the state water contractors that the allocation for 2017 would be 85%. So this, along with our drought buffer, actually provides enough water for the city with, given our projected demands. We also have groundwater in Moro Valley. That was only 4% of our supply for 2016. This is well water that's high in nitrates and requires treatment through the brackish water reverse osmosis plant to remove the nitrates before distribution. We also have Chorro Valley water, which did not provide any of our drinking water system for 2016. This water has a restriction due to stream flows. The stream flow has to exceed 1.4 CFS to be able to pump the water out of that wells. And those wells are also high in nitrates and provide treatment, need to provide treatment, and we don't have a current way to get that water to our brackish water reverse osmosis system at this time. And we have DeSau, which did not provide any water for 2016 as well. The seawater wells have been re-permitted through the Coastal Commission. This permit only allows the city to use these wells during an emergency basis only. So for historic water production, these tables basically show, in general, over time, the population has slightly increased and the water use has generally decreased over time. So as we get more people, we are using water more wisely. So for the history of the WEU allocation program, a WEU is a measurement of water use equal to the amount of water used by a single-family residence over a period of a year. The intent of the WEU program is to allocate, is to regulate the addition of new water users to the city's water system and to ensure that the demand does not exceed available water supply. So from 1977 to 2015, a WEU was equal to 10,780 cubic feet of water per year, which is based on 166 gallons per capita per day. And also, the WEU program is based on a water supply of groundwater, which doesn't really reflect the city's current water supply portfolio. So it doesn't even include state water in it, for instance. The amount of the WEU's was updated in 2016 to equal 8,732 cubic feet, or 90 gallons per capita per day, to better represent the current water usage compared to previous years. So we're, on average, not using anywhere near the 166 anymore. It's more of the 90. So the summary of the 2016 allocations, so for the past nine years, the City Council has allocated 115 WEU's, with the highest WEU's in this timeframe being 23.37 actually used. Last year, they issued 115 were allocated and 12.15 were actually applied for. So we had one commercial for .15 in 12 single-family homes. These are single-family homes that are on vacant lots. They don't already have water meters. So in 2015 and 2016, the WEU's were offset on a two-to-one basis, either by providing water savings or paying an in-luf fee. So actually, the WEU's for 2015 and 2016 wouldn't actually be counted in, as a WEU because they've been offset. So the table, in your staff report, you have a table two. There's actually an error because we've been adding those in each year. So a WEU offset program. Since 2015, the WEU program required each new WEU to offset their water use on a two-to-one basis, and if infeasible, pay a $6,032 in-luf fee. Then, this program was developed due to the drought declaration. And due to the two-to-one offset, there were zero WEU's allocated in 2015 and 2016. So given the amount being updated, the WEU amount being changed from 10,780 to 8,732 cubic feet in 2016, you could recalculate the amount of WEU's left, and you end up with 129.7 WEU's. So the way you get to that is, if you took the table two, and there are 73 remaining currently, you would add in the 2016's and the 2015's because those weren't actually allocated because they were offset. You add those in, you get 105.7, and then you take the ratio since the WEU amounts changed, and you multiply that by, so then that's why you get the 129.7.
I just want to add, this is a very conservative method because we didn't go back and recalculate the WEU's since the beginning of time. They're actually, as you can see from our water use compared to what we have available, many more WEU's. So we typically use about 1,000 acre feet a year. We have 1,313 acre feet of state water and 581 of Moro Valley water readily available. So like Damaris was talking about, this WEU program was developed in the '70s and ' '80s when the city had a quite different water portfolio. Additionally, our urban water management plan predicts that we have enough water available to supply water through build-out, given our various water sources. Now, we may need to build infrastructure to deliver that water, but we have the water available. For example, Chorro Valley water will need some sort of water treatment and perhaps storage. Moro Valley water will need, you know, treatment to deliver that water. And then, to use our DeSau plant, we need to modify our coastal permit to allow us to use that on a regular basis. During the permitting process to reactivate the emergency permit, we've already discussed that with coastal staff, and they've been generally supported as long as we're not overdeveloping our water supplies. Also want to add that, in addition to the offset program, a typical residence or any new water user will pay impact fees or system development fees, and baked into that fee calculation is our capital improvement program, which includes development of new water supplies. Thank you.
So for conclusions and recommendations, Governor Brown has lifted the drought emergency stating conservation must remain a way of life. Morro Bay has continued to conserve many citizens making conservation a way of life. The city will receive its full allotment of state water projected. And staff recommends suspending the WEU program, offset program, and reevaluate the program in a year after the one water plan reevaluates the future water portfolio and reassesses a WEU program accordingly. So we recommend allocating the 115 WEU's for 2017, 2018, at the mix of residential units for 60% single-family home, 40% for multifamily home, for a total of 50 WEU's, and 65 WEU's for commercial use. Also modifying the water conservation requirements from severely restricted to moderately restricted conditions. And that concludes the presentation. I'm here for questions.
Thanks, Damaris. I guess the question that I would have is, do we know factually why we're using less water? Is it really conservation, or is it the nature of we have fewer and fewer residents occupying seven days a week?
It's probably a combination. You know, appliances that you buy now are just a lot more efficient than they were back in the day, and then, yeah, we have, what, a 20% vacancy rate?
I guess the thing that scares me the most is if we tie in the other end of the system, which is our sewer, I don't know that we, have we seen a comparable volume change in sewer? Because my guess is the peaks are just as high with the sewer usage, but there's fewer peak times, so the totality would probably support that we're using less water. But my guess is those peaks probably haven't changed very much in terms of their volume, which means when we do have everybody here, we're still using a lot of water. And I guess my biggest question is, why would we lift the two-to-one offset before we have all these pieces figured out in our water equation?
The justification for the two-to-one offset was, that council made, was the declaration of the drought emergency. Like I talked about earlier, we have various components to how we pay for water. We have our water chart, our user chart fee, based on the amount of water you use. A portion of that pays for future capital projects. We have our impact fee that new development will pay, that also is directly related to capital. It's their buy-in to the system, and then their share of future capital improvements for the system. I think that the justification behind the WEU offset program was when we didn't know that we would have water available to allocate for that particular year. So this WEU offset program has been around for many years. It's embedded in our code and gives, sets up the procedures for using it. So it was used in the '90s. There was lots of toilets retrofitted around town during the '90s, and then it was suspended when water was more available. So this is something that we consider on an annual basis. So in our opinion is, it's currently not needed based on our current and expected water supply situation.
Is it also, correct me if I'm wrong, and I may be wrong on this, I don't have an encyclopedic memory of the permit fee structure that the council has been approving the last few years, but wasn't there a proposal at one time that showed what the actual cost of some of these use pieces were that would contribute to a permit structure that was approximately one and a half or two times what our permit structure is now? I guess what I'm concerned about is, I'd hate to see us use a straw argument, straw dog argument, to lower costs on something that we know is a commodity that may be an issue in the future, that basically subsidizes new construction, that doesn't have any more offsets to, in other words, people aren't doing what they could do with things like gray water. I'm not seeing any projects come through here when we see permits that have any invention whatsoever, except maybe some of the pervious pavement has been a big turnaround. But I'm not seeing the kind of things that make me think we have this consciousness about water savings. You know, the state mandates the water-saving toilets and things, which have been getting more and more restrictive. They're probably half of what they were back in the '70s in terms of usage. But I guess I'm not convinced we should do anything that changes a water-saving structure now, when we have so many pieces in play, or lowers the costs of permitting, when we know we've got major infrastructure projects that are going to be very difficult to fund. So that's more of a comment, but I'm just curious why, I know the state says we don't have a drought, but I just don't know why we would back off water-saving things that we're having built into the infrastructure or a cost structure that suggests to the proposer that we want to still maintain these things in a high priority for the city.
We had a recent water impact fee, water and wastewater impact fee studied when we did our water rate. So Barrow Wells restudied our impact fees, and council adopted the policy of, basically, new development needs to pay their own way. So they adopted 100% of those recommended water impact fees two years ago. So our water and sewer impact fees went up significantly for Morro Bay. They're still low compared to the rest of the county, but it was a very significant increase for Morro Bay.
I concur with what Michael was saying with regards to this two-to-one issue. The other thing is, I want to kind of follow up what Michael was saying about, to be clear, as far as the flows, one of my concerns is, is that the standard of deviation and the variances in the flow data through the month for sewers, for instance, is quite wide, and we take a medium through there. In other words, there is a surcharge of people that come into the city. All of a sudden, the vacation rentals are filled. Vacation people and rentals, they don't think about conserving water. So one of my concerns would be, well, there's a couple of questions. One of them is, do we have the capacity, the accumulators basically, to be able to handle the surcharge of usage? And how are we addressing that issue? Because there's a lot of the people that are living here, that are trying to live here, they're on fixed income, so they're doing their best to keep a conservation. But, you know, people that visit, then that's not on their mind. The other question is, you said that your water conservation reductions were relative to 2013. If memory serves, wasn't that the year we had a huge water supply piping breakage in North Morro Bay where it was emptied out, and also a lot of the, some of the infrastructure leakage? Do you remember?
The water conservation comparing to 2013 is required by the state. That's the year they chose as the baseline.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, those figures that they used, we had an incident here in the city where we, you know, a lot of water got dumped down the street because of infrastructure problems. And so that usage would be like, not quite reflective of what really happened.
So the water used would go through what our water consumption is, coming from the water billing, and the water production, so much water reproduced, and then you remove those extra losses, those known losses that you know. So presumably, that would be already been taken out.
Okay, so like, if you emptied out a tank, you'd have that, that would be like, not in your calculations?
No, because we're using water consumption to calculate water conservation, so we're actually calculating based on the water that flows through the meters.
Okay, okay. And then, the other issue, could you explain this? There was a reduction of 13.5 relative in 2016, relative to 2013, and then the stress test was, can you explain what that means?
The stress test was created by the state water board, and it required each water purveyor to prove, at least on paper, that they had enough water through the next three years of extended drought, that they could provide enough water, given the average demand that they had at that time. So what we had to do is go to the state water and say, how much water are you predicting you're going to give us for the next three years? And when we did that, they predicted they were going to give us enough water for our full allocation.
From the state?
Yes.
State water? And then, but is that, we also supplement it with the Moro Valley, right? So when we run it through the Moro Valley, we have to go through the DeSau plant because of our nitrate issues. And so how, you know, that's an added cost, right, for running the DeSau plant? So every time we run the Moro Valley, because see, here's some of my problems. When you go back to 77, my wife bought here about 30 years ago, and one of the things that she looked for was that there was two sustainable water supplies, the Chorro Valley, the Moro Valley. We didn't have state water. And that was one of the reasons. Well, now, neither one of them are sustainable. One of them, you know, you've got the 1633 decision, and the other one is polluted by nitrates and arguably by sewage. But my point is, is that here, we have infrastructure issues and everything else, and now we're backing off? It doesn't make a lot of sense.
So the Moro Valley typically, last year, provided 4% of our total water supply. 96% was provided by the state water project. The, our water purveyor, which is the San Luis Obispo County Flood Control District, provided us with information that we will have for the next three years, 100% of our allocation. They're able to make those guarantees. They're able to make those guarantees because the county allocation is 25,000 acre feet a year of water through the state water project. They only deliver 4,000 acre feet a year. So when the state reduces the allocation, they can make up, it's usually a percentage of what your total is and they apply that percentage to the total county water supply. So the countywide taxpayers are paying for that 20,000 or so acre feet a year of state water that is not being used by the county, but is available for use during lower water supply conditions. It's only when we get into a situation that happened last, two years ago, when the state reduced it to 0% allocation, because zero times whatever number is still zero. It doesn't help that you have excess water supply available. That zero water supply allocation was an operational issue by DWR. They didn't move enough water south early in the year and they've changed their operational strategy where in the winter, springtime, they're moving as much water as they can south of the delta into San Luis Reservoir and point south so that all that water is available through the summer.
And the other, can you explain to me the permit that you're going for through the CCC on the D-SAL plant? You said you're going to have to modify it. What is that, what does that mean operationally?
So back in the 90s, the city got a permit to operate their D-SAL plant for interim basis when it, for emergency purposes. And the coastal commission added condition, do these things and it becomes permanent to the city for emergency operations. Well, the city didn't do those things. It expired in 2000 because we had state water, I think was the logic, that we didn't need that water. Last, two years ago, we reapplied for that permit. We were able to meet those conditions, that additional information the state needed, approved for emergency use with the idea that we would permit that for ongoing operations of the D-SAL plant. For example, we could turn it on at any time and use it to supplement our water supply. Economically, it doesn't make sense while we are still a full state water customer because we're a take-or-pay contractor. Whether we use state water or not, we're paying the full amount for it. So that permit will allow us to use D-SAL water as part of our water portfolio. I don't think we're ready to commit to that quite yet because we don't really know what the, what our water portfolio will entail. So that's why we engaged Kroll Engineering to, for this one water planning effort to look at all of our water resources holistically and prepare a, in addition to the, kind of the mechanical pieces of it, the water and wastewater and stormwater master plans and a lookout feature where we're looking out to what our, what we think our water portfolio will need to be in, you know, 10, 20, 50 years. And that will inform the city's general plan to make sure that our land use decisions that we're making are coincident with the resources that we have available to make those decisions. And some of the conditions that the coastal commission wants us to look at, should we want that permit, they've already told us, is a relocation of the outfall and then look at a relocation of the facility.
Are they going to require an EIR for the relocation of the outfall?
Typically, they wouldn't specify what sort of environmental document that we, we would use. We would make that determination ourselves based on what the potential environmental impacts would be.
Okay, and then, when did, when did we start using the D-SAL plant for Morro Valley water from the wells? To run the, run the, run the water from the Morro Basin into the D-SAL plant?
Somewhere in the early 2000s. I wasn't here at the city when they started doing that.
Okay.
And then in 2008, we got a Department of Health Services grant to install the brackish water treatment trains.
I think if memory serves, I think mid 2000s, there was a notification that had to go out because the citizens in Morro Bay got highly-nitrated water delivered to their residents. And part of the study that was done by CLEET, I would just like your opinion on what you think that the nitrates on the CLEET study showed that there was a spike in 2002, a significant spike in nitrates in the Morro, Morro Basin wells. What do you think that spike is from? Because it's spiked and it's continued to spike since then.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that study in a number of years, so I.
But what, what do you think would spike the nitrate issues? Because that you remember, right?
Yeah.
It was like steady, steady and all of a sudden it spiked in 2002.
I remember reading that. Like I said, I wasn't actually working here when that was going on. I know that we were working in the Morro Valley with the MTBE issues at that time. I don't know if that had anything to.
MTBE was over here.
Yeah.
Past the Narrows.
Yeah. So I, I can't speculate. I'd have to go back and reread the study.
That's it.
Yeah, I see on page four, a report that it says the city used approximately 76% of its available water. So that suggests to me that 24% was a surplus and, and does that go into some sort of a buffer account for future use or anything like that? Again, it's just, we didn't use all the water, so I'm wondering, do we have any rights to that unused water? Well, in the document that I have, it says page four. The city uses only approximately 76% of its available state water and almost none of the groundwater that is available.
Oh, okay.
I don't know where it says that, but I know the answer anyway.
So the first, yeah, so what, what happens in terms of our rights?
So our unused water stays in.
Excuse me, sorry about that. Our unused water stays within the state water system for our use later on. So it typically is stored in San Luis Reservoir. That's the, the point south of the delta where the water gets pumped to before the water treatment plant. So it would stay in there for, for years where there's less water available. So in the, I talked about that 0% year, we were using that stored water. Well, this year, San Luis Reservoir spilled on paper. It didn't actually spill over the, the dam. But it was full enough that they couldn't pump, because it was raining so much in Northern California, they couldn't pump enough water south to keep up with the amount of inflow that was coming into the reservoir. So at that point, everybody's stored water, based on our agreement with DWR, resets to zero. Because the theory is it's not a drought anymore. You don't need that stored water. So it resets to zero. I think the person that, the agency that makes out in that deal is the state water agency because they keep all that unallocated stored water to be resold.
I see. Okay, so then in the event of a, the next drought, in the scenario where the next year becomes a drought year, we, then we don't have a buffer to draw upon?
We have what is called a drought buffer. So we pay extra to get, we get 165% of our annual allocation, but we can never take more than 1,313 acre feet. So it's an insurance policy to make sure that we get our full allocation. So any state water allocation that is above 35%, we get 100% of our water. If it's below 35%, then it's prorated to that 165 or 2,200 acre feet a year. It's prorated based on that. So when it's a, a 10% year, we'll get 10% of 2,200 acre feet or a couple hundred acre feet a year. And then we rely upon the, either stored water or the county's excess allocation. So the county has 25,000 acre feet a year. You multiply 10% times that, 2,500, we all share in that amount of water.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to sort of understand just how secure Morro Bay's water supply is in the event of prolonged drought. So maybe a better way to phrase the question is, so if we were to face three, four, perhaps five years of zero allocation from the state, how long would Morro Bay essentially be water secure? If, is that a, is that an impossible question to ask or?
It's, we, we can always provide water because we have a D-SAL plant down on the coast.
Let me qualify, at, without heroic efforts, the sort of the, the, the more conservative approach to providing water, the less expensive approach.
So the lesser, the lesser expensive is groundwater. So we can, our demand is typically about, I'm going to use round numbers, is typically around 1,000 acre feet a year. We can supply from the Morro Valley 500 acre feet a year. So that's half of our water supply.
But we don't currently, right?
We don't currently because it costs money to supply that water and we have to pay for state water anyway. If we aren't getting state, just remember, even if we're not getting a drop of state water, we're still paying for it because it's a take-or-pay contract. So it's, it becomes a financial issue in addition to a water supply issue. That's why our current rates also have a drought rate and a saltwater D-SAL rate. So if we have to turn on our D-SAL plant for an extended period of time, our rates can go up to cover those costs. So we're not bankrupting the, the water system. So I don't consider that running the D-SAL heroic efforts because that's what it was meant for is when state water was unavailable for extended periods of time, we can, it's a little bit more than flipping a switch. I made it appear too simply. We have to clean some membranes and make sure everything is operating well and then flip the, the switch on. But we can supply water through our saltwater D-SAL, our brackish water D-SAL. Heroic efforts would be to put in emergency treatment in the Choro Valley to denitrify that water and to petition the state board to allow us to use those wells when the flow is below 1.4 CFS in Choro Creek. I've, I've said this a bunch of times at various public meetings. We cannot let Morro Bay run out of water. There are ways that we can get water here. We have an emergency exchange contract with CMC. That's another heroic effort. It requires us to pay, they, they'll make water for themselves during normal operating hours and then make water for us on overtime. So it's an additional cost for them to make water for us.
Well, I probably misspoke in characterizing it as heroic. But I guess what I'm getting at is, in, in some sense, we're being asked to decide whether we should continue with some certain conservation efforts. And if we discontinue those and then are faced with a significant drought over a number of years, then of course we might be asked to resume those measures or we might be asked to again, make use of the desalinization plant or some of the other wells. It, it just strikes me as it might be more sensical to, to just continue with the conservation efforts. The, the other question I have is, this, this surplus of water, the water that we don't use, okay? How does that translate into, if it translates at all, into water equivalency units? That, I guess what I'm saying is that, that water that we don't use is presumably the readily available water for development, to service additional homes and businesses?
I wouldn't say that. I would say you, you would have to look at more on an annual basis. So if we're using 1,000 acre feet and we have 1,800 acre feet of water readily available, and I wouldn't add that 800 acre feet onto the total and say that's all available for development. I would say that there's 800 feet, acre feet on an annual basis that would be available for new development, but not 1,600 the next, if we're saving 800, 1,600 and then 2,400. That water is available for, to make up the difference when we don't have 100% water supply allocation.
Right, I, I think I understand that. I'm just trying to, it seems that over the last five to 10 years, 10 to 20, water equivalency units have actually been consumed or used in terms of construction? And that seems to have been sufficient for growth in Morro Bay. So I'm, I'm, so what, what would be the, what would, if you can answer, what would be the outer limits of sustainable growth on a yearly basis in Morro Bay? Or, or how many, how many years can Morro Bay continue to grow in its water needs without some significant change in its water source? I'm sorry if I'm not being clear in my question.
So many cities look at this on a regular basis. So they do a water supply plan, which is what we're proposing to do. Our last real look at water supply was in 1994 and we really haven't studied it since that point in time. I would not recommend that after this project is done, we wait another 30 years to study our water supply portfolio, that we need to, just like our general plan, our water rates, we need to be looking at these issues on a more regular basis. How much water does Morro Bay have for development? I would say there is a statute on the books that, that puts a cap on our population and a cap on the number of residential units that we can allocate on an annual basis as, at 70 plus seven additional units in any given year. Our population cap, which may or may not be enforceable, I don't know, it depends which attorney you talk to, is 12,200. That's set by Measure F and Ordinance 266. That was adopted in 1984, given our, what our water resources were at that time, which they envisioned would be groundwater and an allocation of Whale Rock water. And we're in a completely different situation, yet we've never reassessed what type of situation that we're in.
Well, I, I don't, I don't have any confidence that a population maximum is enforceable. So I guess, could, could Morro Bay sustain 70 new water equivalency units every year for 10 years without significant change? I'm trying, again, I'm just trying to get at some.
I don't know about 10 years, but I don't know if Morro Bay, if there's the market for Morro Bay to sustain even close to 70. We grow at about a 1% per year. Less than 1% per year.
I, I'm just trying to sort of, and I appreciate the fact that Morro Bay's not growing at that rate, but I'm just trying to get some idea of what the, that maximum is. It seems we, we should be aware of, you know, what we can achieve and what's beyond the pale of. But in, in any event, it seems to me that 20 actual units being used each year is sort of sustainable. Is that pretty decent?
That's what we've. That's what we've, have been requested and allocated. Council, or requested, council allocates typically fifty residential water equivalency units per year.
But there's no, I kind of got that, but there's no.
There's no demand for fifty of them.
Well, beyond that, there's not even a, there's not even a nexus to knowledge or even rationality. I mean, there's no, nobody knows if you could actually use fifty allocations a year for the next year, ten years and meet your water responsibility. I mean, I realize the city council may have done that, but we don't really know that that can be achieved, right?
Yeah, that's why we're, that's why we're embarking on this water planning effort. So that we, we can know precisely, or as precisely as you can predict twenty years ahead, what our growth will look like.
And so we can fix this.
Right. The only reason I bring it up is because when I first came onboard the commission, and I remember hearing the allocation of a hundred-and-fifteen, and I, at that time, I thought there was some sort of historical or scientific relationship between that hundred-and-fifteen allocated and the amount of water that you could actually supply for development, but that really doesn't exist, does it?
It may have existed at some point in time. We've been unable to determine the math that was used to get there. It's not documented. There's an ordinance, but none of the backup behind that ordinance.
And the math that got us there also got us to our twelve-thousand-two-hundred-person population in two thousand.
Two thousand, yeah. We were supposed to be built out in two thousand.
If that tells you anything.
Thank you.
So, I just have a couple of quick questions. So, just to follow up on what Joe was saying, or Joe's question, it sounds like the readily-available, the easily-available, non-state water sources would be desal and the Morro Basin. So, the question I have is, if state water is interrupted for a period of time, can desal and the Morro Basin provide one-thousand acre-feet per year indefinitely?
We're, permit-wise, we're almost there, about nine-hundred and, Damaris is doing math right now, so we're being dangerous, doing math in public.
Actually, six forty-five is eight, and five-eight-one is twelve ninety-six.
Yes, we can, twelve ninety-six acre-feet a year between the desal and Morro Valley.
So, an interruption in state water, for whatever reason, would not necessarily result in draconian conservation measures on the part of the population?
Correct. It may result in that because water rates would go up significantly because we have the desal surcharge.
Right. And then the second question that I have, you know, looking at, looking at Table Two, you know, it's pretty dramatic, the decrease in per-capita use from the high year of nineteen-seventy to two thousand and sixteen. It's like a fifty percent reduction in per-capita water use. Given the fact that Morro Bay, residentially, has a huge preponderance of single-family dwellings, do you have a feeling, maybe by comparing with sewer flow rates or whatever, whether the decrease in use is due primarily to a decrease in landscape use or household use or perhaps commercial use?
We were talking about this earlier. We've seen the dramatic decreases in residential use, not so much in commercial use. And then, I'll let Damaris talk to this, but the easiest decreases in water use are through exterior water use. It's not as impactful on your way of life to reduce your irrigation outside as it is to reduce your inside water use. But, in the last twenty, thirty years, has been a lot of advances in plumbing fixtures. We're not going back to the days of the five-gallon-per-flush toilet. We're one-point-two-gallon, one-point-two-eight gallon-per-flush toilets code requirement. So, we're not going back on there. Showers are much more efficient than they were. Washing machines are much more efficient. People that have made these investments in these fixtures are not all of a sudden going to remove them and put in, even if you could find them, higher water-using fixtures. I'll let Damaris talk a little bit more about the interior versus exterior and water conservation in general.
Yeah, so the residential water conservation has reduced over these last few years twenty and thirty percent, quite a bit, actually carrying why our, why our reduction has been so low, because that's like, the residential's like seventy-five percent of our total water use. The commercial and industrial doesn't change very much, they're a little more fixed amount of water use to them. We've had rebates out there for rain barrels and for cash-for-grass irrigation controllers or removing sprinklers, and they were used a lot in the very beginning. They've kind of tapered off now, they're not quite as popular anymore, but they, you know, there's been quite a bit of water reduction residentially. It's the commercial and industrial that we have that has been kind of a little more steady. Like I said, it's just, there's, there's less water for them to save until they make big, expensive changes.
Well, so just, just to get a little bit more direct comparison, has there been a reduction in per-capita sewage flow that is proportionate to the reduction in per-capita water use?
Proportional, not directly proportional, because there's been some reduction in exterior water use, but we've seen lower flows at the treatment plant because of water conservation.
So, that would suggest then it's a combination of interior and exterior conservation?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Any further?
Yeah, one of the things, recently, it's my understanding that the Morro Bay City Council had removed the reclamation portion out of the wastewater treatment plant project. Has the reclamation portion in this water supply, was that even considered?
It was considered in our future urban water management plan. Council has wanted us to bring back options for phasing in of water reclamation. They haven't actually removed it from the project itself. They want costs, basically due to the rate impact of a hundred-and-sixty-seven million-dollar project, to look at strategies to reduce those rates. So, they have directed us to bring back a secondary treatment option that would be able to phase tertiary and water reclamation in the future, and then the tertiary treatment option that could add water reclamation in the future. And then compare that to the preferred, what we call the preferred project, because it was based on the community goals. But to be fair, the community goals were decided upon without knowing how much that would cost.
Yeah, but they changed the scope of the project. It wasn't just a, they made a decision to remove the reclamation part.
They haven't made a decision to remove the reclamation part as of yet. They wanted us to bring back these costs so that later on this summer, they can make that informed decision.
I had a few more things. First, the power plant operated off its own water system, correct? We didn't, when we look at the commercial water use and the industrial water use, none of that was factored in because of the power plant, because they had their own.
Correct. They operated two wells and it's Morro Bay Mutual Water Company is their water.
And in our, in our discussion of future sources, that's never been placed into play, the possibility of somehow negotiating the water rights from the power plant property into the city water.
We've talked about it, we haven't moved forward on it yet.
Okay, and I guess the other, the other thing I wanted to ask is the state water contract, state water is contracted through how long, what period of time at this point?
There's really no expiration date on that contract.
Deal with the devil. What is this?
It kind of is. But there is reopening provisions.
When is the reopening provision possible?
I think six years now. It's when the local facilities' bonds are paid off. So, back in the nineties, we had to pay for the construction of the Choro Valley pipeline out here. Those local facilities will be paid off in, I believe, six years, twenty-twenty-one, not quite, five years now. They'll be paid off and then we can renegotiate the amount of reclaimed water that, or, not reclaimed water, excuse me, state water that we could take.
So, is the, is the One Water Plan looking at some mileposts down the line in terms of, there's the possibility of exchanging the costs of the state water system and influence the cost of the reclaimed water from the plant?
Yes, they'll be laying out various scenarios and what the estimated costs for each of those scenarios will be.
And it's possible, my understanding is, that the state water is the most expensive water. The reclaimed water is expensive, but less than that. And the desal water is where, in terms of per unit to produce?
Actually, they all come in at about the same amount. State water is expensive, but it's based on how much we use. So, at our thirteen-thirteen acre-foot, if we used all of it, state water would be about sixteen-hundred dollars an acre-foot. We're only using about a thousand, so because of the high fixed costs, we're paying about two-thousand dollars an acre-foot for state water. For reclaimed water, it's about twenty-two-hundred dollars an acre-foot, I think was the last estimate. You know, this is a very early-on estimate, too. Desal water, sixteen-hundred acres, so they're all in the same order of magnitude. I think we need to refine those costs through the One Water Plan.
And the.
And then also look at some of the other non-cost issues, like state water, very interruptible water supply.
Well, you also have, you also have the network ideas of the state water project has hidden costs for all the pumping and the carbon footprint of getting the water down here from the delta. I mean, it's a massive amount of energy consumption to get that unit of water here versus if it was somehow brought in locally. And I don't know what the desal efficiency is, but the, you know, the power to do the desal is pretty amazingly expensive, too. But I don't want to prolong that, I just wanted to make sure those pieces are being looked at in the larger One Water.
Yes, you are correct.
Any other questions from? Okay, this is a new business item. Public comment is not required on this item, however, it is welcome, and therefore I would like to open up a public comment period. If anyone wants to speak about water equivalencies or anything else regarding this recommendation that we're discussing, please let us hear from you.
Hi, I'm Diane Play and I'm from North Morro Bay. And I was just concerned with the comment regarding the stay on the water with the sewer plant, because from our understanding, they did put a hold on the water part of it, you know, opposed to just doing the sewer. So, when Mr. Sadowski brought that up, it was kind of, it just interested me because most of the residents thought that that was stopped, the water part, and we're just going to do the sewer, and that at a later time, we were going to talk about doing the water. So, I just wanted that, for the record, most of us citizens would be concerned about that. So, that's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, I think, Rob, I think she's talking about the reclamation part of the project, and if you want to just reiterate where we're at with that?
Sure. Couple of months ago, council made a decision to pause the project to look at a couple of different options. One option being tertiary with phased water reclamation, the other option being secondary with phased tertiary and water reclamation. We will bring those two options back later, probably right after Labor Day time period, and council will then make a final decision on what the project will be. No final decision has been made, how they're proceeding. They wanted to know what those costs were first before they could make that decision.
So, I think, so the short answer is that the council is still deliberating.
Correct.
The timing of the reclamation aspect.
Yes.
For the record, I believe that's incorrect. I think that a decision was made at that, at the, at that, I think it was an April meeting. I'm pretty sure that that was a motion and a decision was made. So, for the record, I don't quite agree.
Then we'll close public comment and bring the issue back to the council for discussion. Richard, why don't you lead us off on this one?
I, I'm not in favor of any, any relaxation as far as the drought and the issue with the water here. I feel that, that the sewer flows have not gone down. For instance, Cayucus's sewage has gone from around nineteen percent to about twenty, over twenty percent going into the plant. Our plant still is only running on a secondary, sewer plant's only running secondary. We have serious infrastructure issues that, we've had a couple of tanks that leaked, one on the Nutmeg area and one in the North Morro Bay area, so that, you know, we should do everything we can to not be subsidizing any new development and burdening the existing, the existing infrastructure's surcharge. So, I think that any, any kind of mechanism that we could have, have with regards to our water supply, especially put into the infrastructure, is long overdue. And as far as, I'd never been a big fan of these equivalency units when we first heard about them, because the, once again, the issue I bring up is the, I'm a fluid dynamicist by profession, so for me, when I look at the flow, it's not just the flow, it's the standard of deviation and the variances in that flow. And I don't think that we could just sit back and say, we just have this average going through there. We have, you know, we have, we're a tourist community. We go from, you know, a few thousand, you know, ten thousand people, or like Cayucus, for instance, where I work, it went from, you know, a couple thousand to like, you know, during an event, you have five, six thousand, everybody's full, and then flows literally with quadruple, triple. And so, I think that, you know, we in Morro Bay have that same kind of situation. So, I believe that we should maintain, in fact, even go further, go with, you know, you know, start implementing gray water into our design guidelines and all that, but I feel any, any laxing is not in the right direction.
Michael.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Sadowski. I guess my vision looking forward would be that we probably would become more like Cayucus for now, but if our downtown plans come through and I think we actually get more people living in the city, my fear is that we've got a lot of ghosts living in the city and that at some point, when bodies actually take up the bedrooms and use the bathrooms and all this efficiency that we have is going to be replaced by more consumption at a higher level of efficiency. So, my guess is I wouldn't want to lull ourselves to sleep thinking that there's actually been a conservation. There probably has, but my guess is, as we add density to the living downtown in the, you know, in the, in the scope of our general plan that we're looking at. we're looking at, these kind of tactical things about the water for recommendations to the city council, I, I just don't understand why we would move at this point away from conservation encouragement or requirement until we have these other things more in place. Um, I think if we had to relax the water equivalency units to, to talk about rationalizing the development downtown, I think that would be a more interesting point to bring up, rather than just say, oh, we've done a really good job, let's relax it. I, I think there should be some gain to the city, uh, if we relax any of the water equivalency units or if we would relax the conservation efforts. I, I think, I would love to see more people living in town, spending money, living here, make it affordable housing and, you know, have water rights to take care of it than to release rights or to lull ourselves to sleep that we can just keep building the way we do. I don't, I don't think that's sustainable. So I, I would recommend to the, um, council that the report be received and, and, you know, thank the, you know, the staff for the, you know, work on the fact that we've got these obviously flawed systems of recording use and, you know, these, these archaic techniques that go back thirty and forty years. We need to rethink those things. But I wouldn't reduce conservation till we've, we've gone through the report with the One Water Study and know more about the impact on the future of development.
Joe?
I, I agree with my fellow commissioners with respect to the water conservancy. You may or may not believe that we're in, for prolonged periods of drought, but at the very least, um, conditions will become more uncertain and unpredictable. So I think that the water conservation policies should stay in place. And, and then with respect to the, uh, water equivalency units, because I can't see any rational connection between seventy-three units and the water that can be allocated for development on a yearly basis, I'm not for allocating seventy-three units. I just, I don't see, I don't see any rationality in that. So I think we should discontinue that fiction and come up with something that's, um, a little bit more predictable and useful.
Well, um, I would, I would join, uh, my fellow commissioners in recommending to the council that we continue the retrofit program, um, for the present time. We, you know, we, I think it would be foolish, you know, we've had one wet year here, guys. I think it would be foolish to say, oh, the drought's over, we're all good, because we know it'll be back. We know the drought will be back. We also know that there are a lot of projects out there that can be funded through the retrofit program, which will help alleviate the, the condition. Yeah, the, a lot of the low-hanging fruit has been picked. People have low-flow toilets and they have low-flow showerheads. But what they don't have is, uh, they're still, number one, I think, I think there's still a lot of old washing machines around town, uh, old dishwashers around town that could be reached, reached out to. Um, there's very little in the way of gray water, um, reclamation that could be, that could be a target of the retrofit program. Um, so I think there's, I think there's a lot of good that can be done. And, and as we kind of talked about this afternoon a little bit, reaching out to the commercial, to commercial users, uh, through perhaps establishing a revolving loan program or something like that, so that we begin to see the same improvements in the commercial sector that we've seen in the, in the residential sector. Uh, so, so, and, uh, you know, we're, we're in the process of, of reanalyzing everything through the One Water Program. So it seems, it, it seems premature to make a change until we have more accurate data. Um, in terms of the allocations, um, first of all, I, I think, um, it's very apparent when you look at the data, when, when you look at particularly Table Two, that over the years, um, whatever the methodology was that was developed in nineteen eighty-four, we've, you know, has drifted further and further from reality. Um, we're, you know, we're, we now have a per capita water consumption which is about sixty percent of what it was in nineteen eighty-four, and yet a water equivalency unit is still considered a water equivalency unit. We're, we're not taking account of the fact that when we allocate a W E U in two thousand seventeen, we're actually allocating point six of a two, of a nineteen eighty-four W E U. Uh, and the two, two thousand and, and we've continued to do that up until two thousand and sixteen, and I applaud the adjustment that was done at that point. But it didn't happen all of the other years, so we, you know, we got off course. And just to, just to give an illustration of how far off course we are, um, uh, the, the population cap of twelve thousand and two hundred, to reach that, we, we'd need to add about fifteen hundred more residents to, uh, the city. Um, and yet we only have a little over, theoretically, we only have a little over a hundred water equivalency units that we could add. So in order to reach both of those targets, every new household that comes into the city from now on has to have at least twenty members. Not likely to happen. So I think our math is off. I don't think we can say this is justified by the mathematics. And I think there's three factors that, that account for that. One is conservation, okay? Second is the fact that we have much smaller households than were contemplated in nineteen eighty-four. So nineteen eighty-four, it was one point nine persons per household. It's now down to about one point four. So each household, not only does each member of the household use less water, but there are a few, fewer members in each household to, to be using water. And the third is, as has been alluded to, the vacancy rate in town. There are a number of houses that are hardly using any water at all. Um, so again, mathematically, I don't think it works. I think then we have to look at maybe just more common sense. Okay, one of the things that, one of the things that to me is a little bit problematic with the current way that things are being allocated is it's first come, first served. Okay, so if I want a W E U, I walk in and they're either available, they're not available. On the other hand, Moro Bay has a critical need for affordable housing, affordable and work, and workforce housing. Uh, so, uh, I think we need to, I think we need to respond to that in terms of the way we award W E U's. Um, currently, and under Measure F, there are some limitations. For example, on an ongoing basis, we can't award more than seventy residential W E U's per year. That's in the ordinance. That's the, you know, you can go up to seventy-seven in one year, but then assume that we have to go down to sixty-three the next year. So, you know, seventy seems to be the number to work with. Uh, and traditionally there, traditionally, and we need to award a hundred and thirty percent of the number of residential W E U's for commercial use. Okay, now, in reality, okay, in reality, the only number in, you know, all of these different segments that has any impact is the number of W E U's allocated for single-family residential. Okay, we never meet the, we never come close to meeting the available allocation for multifamily housing. We never come, we never award even a fraction of what is allocated for industrial. So you can, you can put whatever number you want in those columns. It, it doesn't make any difference at all practically. What we need, what we, what we have to look at basically is the, the, the number that are available for single family. Now, the recommendation that's being made by staff, okay, with the, with the sixty forty split between single-family and multifamily residential and a hundred and fifteen W E U's per year, would have, would, would make available thirty-two units, thirty-two W E U's for single-family residential. That's, you know, when you, when you multiply everything out, you come up with thirty-two. What I would propose for, as for discussion, would be that we, in fact, ask the council to allocate all of the, all seventy of the W, of the W E U's that are available for residential use. Using the same ratio, okay, that would allow forty-two W E U's for single-family resident, residential use and twenty-eight for multifamily residential use. Okay, however, I would also recommend that ten of the single-family W E U's and half, fourteen of the multifamily W E U's be reserved for, for development which is either deed-restricted, affordable or workforce. Okay? What that does is it gives you pretty much, it get, that gives you, uh, thirty-two market-rate W E U's for single-family as opposed to thirty, virtually unchanged, and eighteen multifamily W E U's for market-rate as opposed to twenty. So they're very similar. But what it does is it provides this buffer of ten single-family and fourteen multifamily W E U's, so that if somebody walks in the counter, walks into the counter and says, I want to, I want to develop an affordable housing project here in Moro Bay, they won't be told, I'm sorry, you have to wait till next year because we don't have any W E U's available. It makes, it makes that buffer then available for affordable housing projects.
Just to get clarity a little bit, uh, like, for an analogy, uh, let's say, uh, you know, we talk about, when we were talking about the downtown plan, and we were saying, hey, you know, if, uh, somebody has an idea as residential at the bottom and then has maybe affordable housing or workforce housing on upper stories, if they redevelop that project, that would be kind of what you were, you would say would work, more of a high-density? How's that work? You know, like, practically, give like an example, maybe?
Well, yeah, I mean, deed-restricted affordable housing is, is defined, okay?
Mm-hmm.
I think we would need to define workforce housing in a very clear way. And if those upper-story units required W E U's, okay, and if they met those definitions, then those ten buffer units would be available for that development. Or actually, that would be multifamily, so there would be fourteen, uh, that would be available for that, you know? Uh, as it is, you know, if, if, if there's thirty, if, if there's thirty that have been allocated, you know, or let's say there's twenty multifamily that have been allocated, and somebody comes in and builds a, a large luxury condominium development and uses up eighteen of those, and then somebody comes in with a, an affordable housing development, there's only two W E U's left, you know? So, so this would avoid that situation. And in terms of commercial, in terms of commercial, the, the commercial part of this, it, there would be ninety commercial W E U's available. I mean, it's rare that we get to ten percent of that figure in any given year. So that's, really is not an issue. So that would be a total of a hundred and sixty W E U's, seventy residential, forty-two single-family, twenty-eight multifamily, with ten single-family and fourteen multifamily reserved for workforce affordable housing, and that, and then ninety commercial W E U's available. That would be, that would be, that's kind of what I'm proposing, we recommend to, to council.
I don't have a problem with rethinking the short-term allocation like Dr. Teft is talking about. I, I think that, that this formula is so flawed. That nineteen eighty-four house was probably maybe two bedrooms, maybe two baths. Now we've got four bedrooms, five bedrooms, six bedrooms, three, four baths, half baths, you know? Uh, I, I, it's, it's staggering to me the capacity that I think is in these dwellings we're building now. I mean, our list that we did on the consent agenda, how many single-family dwellings are really on that? There's probably fifty housing units on there. And what's the nature of that relative to these? Well, we're replacing a house. Yeah, but you've tripled the number of fixtures inside the house that use water. Okay, well, okay. And then it's just, it doesn't represent the capacity of people to be in these places and use all of these things to their capacity. That, that's what scares me the most. I think we have a very quiet gap between what's built in place and what the capacity to use it is. And I just think we have to keep moving in the direction of increasing the capacity of, of intelligent water use and not subsidize unintelligent water use.
But if I can, if I could just respond to that a little bit, at the same time, okay, at the same time, the, the household size of occupied housing units in Moro Bay, letting aside the, the vacancies, okay, the, the household size for occupied housing units in Moro Bay keeps going down, okay? It's gone, in the last ten years, it's gone, you know, from about one point six down to one point four. Households in Moro Bay are getting smaller, okay? On the other hand, houses in Moro Bay are getting bigger, okay? So what we have here is not really so much a water issue, it's a, it's a general plan issue in, in terms of how do we, how do we make the provision of housing fit more accurately with the needs of the population?
I think in the short term, you're right. The, the thing about, we had, we had two elementary schools at one time. Now we have one. But there's some pressure on that one to, to expand a little bit, or it's coming back up to its, its capacity. And that, that's what scares me is, is I understand the actual occupant load in the house has gone down, but the fact is when we're planning infrastructure and we're looking at the cost of the water infrastructure, we have to envision the capacity of the town, the way it's built out to absorb those things actually turning around and becoming family residences with two or three, two kids, dogs that drink a lot of water, um, in them. And, and that's what, that's all I'm concerned in the long term. The short term, I think we're fine. I'm having trouble with what you're saying, but I, I could envision Moro Bay with, with this kind of build-out we're talking about in downtown and more families occupying it because we have jobs here. And it, it's not so much the vacation house weekend thing that I think it will continue to become maybe in the next five to ten years, but I think it'll turn around at some point. So I think we're in a trough here where we're safe to do all these things that we're doing. Long term, though, with the sewer, we've got a bunch of houses here that have a bunch of capacity to flush and wash and bathe, and we have to be careful that at some point we could be triggering a lot more water use than we see now, just because of the capacity that's built.
You know, kind of following up what you said, is that maybe the households have gotten smaller, but also we're becoming more of a destination. So when we start looking at usage, yeah, the houses are getting bigger. And, you know, I have a friend of mine who has a house in North Moro Bay and near her is a vacation rental, and that, that place is like, there's like twenty people in there, you know what I mean? And that's what I'm talking about, with this, with those, with those fluctuations and, and, you know, even, you know, even our sewer line in North Moro Bay is over capacity as we speak right now. So when we look at the long term, like what we're saying, we need to take into account those flow discrepancies, those flow differentials. But, um, I, I, I like your idea, doctor.
But isn't it, but isn't it true that the, the, the allocation never comes close to being used in, in any given year?
Well, the single-family allocation sometimes is reached, okay? In other words, sometimes all, it's some years, all of that is, is used. That, that has not been the case since the recession, you know? But, um, as Michael noted, uh, that, that seems to be changing in terms of looking at the advanced planning list, that, you know, there, there does appear to be a fair amount of residential set to come online.
But to anyone's knowledge, have we, have we? We've never been faced with a situation where someone was denied the ability to, to do a development because there wasn't a unit available? Is that a-
We'd have to ask staff.
Has that ever occurred, that somebody was denied the ability to construct a home or a business because-
Not in recent history. I think back in the eighties, there was, um, a delay if you couldn't get all the offsets, um, to build. Um, so you, you had to, through the W E U offset program, you had to provide that.
And if, I mean, I would just point out, if that were the case, it would strongly incentivize the retrofit program. Uh, in other words, the only way you would be able to, to build that year would be to, to perform the retrofits.
Yes. If, if we don't recalculate things, we could, based on previous math, we could run out of allocations for, for next year. If everything gets used. But, um, if we look at recent history- But if we look at recent history, chances are, everything won't get used.
Boz, it's also, I think, important to realize, we're probably talking about one year. I mean, by the time this process happens next year--
We'll have better information.
We'll have the One Water Program, probably all of this data will be irrelevant, and we'll have better data to look at.
Then I do agree, in the sense of giving us, giving a certain preference to affordable housing, I think that's, I think that's very useful.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we have to just stop just talking about affordable housing and say, okay, how can we incentivize it? I think this is one way to do it. So do you, would you like a motion on this, or would you like to sort of just take back the consensus of the group for presentation to the council, or?
So, if I might, may I kind of summarize what I heard from consensus? Consensus would be to maintain our same conservation level, maintain our WEU offset program, to allocate seventy residential WEUs, forty-two for single-family residential, twenty-eight for multifamily, reserving ten single-family and fourteen multifamily for affordable deed-restricted or workforce housing, and to keep commercial at the same rate, one hundred and thirty percent of the residential. Yes, ninety. That's what I have. Do we, do I see forehead nods? Okay, thank you.
The first, the first item on the agenda is Item B1, which is Case Number CP-0-542, UP-0-477, and AD-0-118 regarding a property at 3121 Sandalwood Street. And I believe that Joan is going to do the staff presentation on this.
Thank you, Chairman Teft, and good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. The next item before you this evening is for a coastal development and conditional use permit along with a parking exception at 3121 Sandalwood to allow for a two hundred and eighteen square foot addition to a non-conforming single-family residence. The project is located to the west of Highway One, adjacent to the environmentally sensitive habitat of Elva Pole Creek, and within the Coastal Commission Appeal jurisdiction. This is an aerial view showing the residence in location to the creek corridor, and just panned out a little bit to give you a wider berth, if you will. A biological report was prepared by Kevin Merck that clearly identified the top of the bank of the stream corridor. It's shown here as a red line. The biologist then defined the required fifty-foot buffer line, shown here as a light black line. I can't even see it without my glasses on, but I know it's about there, if you can see The site plan shows the proposed two hundred and eighteen foot, or two hundred and eighteen square foot addition, which is to be located outside of that required fifty-foot buffer area. The project proposal also includes a request for a parking exception to allow for the memorialization of a one-car garage that does not meet the minimum dimensions as defined in the Morro Bay Municipal Code, as well as, the parking exception is also for the allowance of a compact-sized tandem space in the driveway to accommodate the second required parking This is the street view. The proposed front elevation that shows the addition located to the left side of the structure. The north-side elevation showing the proposed addition also on the left side of the structure in this image. South-side elevation showing the proposed addition to the right. And I will go back to this slide, which is staff's recommendation, just to show you that, per our conversation earlier today, Dr. Teft, the applicant and his family went to the site and pulled a car in to the garage to show that they are able to park a car in that existing garage. The picture on the right-hand side is the front bumper in relation to the back of the garage, and then these two pictures show the garage door closed, and Mrs. Fry opening the, her passenger side door and able to get out of the car in that, in that garage. So therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 16-17, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for UP-0477 and CP-0542, and parking exception AD-0118 for the proposed addition at 3121 Sandalwood. Thank you.
Very good. Are there questions first off at this point?
Joan, keeping the tree, do we have enough safeguards about the nature of the front yard construction that keeps the tree intact?
That is a good question. Hang on one second.
And there is no parking in the front yard at this point? Every, the parking is, as, there's nothing changing about the nature of the parking?
No, sir, not at all. No parking in the esch and no parking. One spot that we did look at before actually taking a look at this, at the site very specifically was to go into, actually where that tree is located, but upon looking at that beautiful, beautiful tree, we did not suggest that they put the parking there. I don't believe there's any specific request or any condition of approval that requires them to care for the tree, but I know that the applicants are looking to keep that tree there.
Thanks, that's all.
Other questions? Then let me ask if anyone has ex parte communications to discuss. Okay, seeing none, then we will open this up for public comment. Typically, we allow the applicant or applicant representative the opportunity to speak first, so if you would like to do that, please let us hear from you.
Good evening, Commissioner. Chris Parker, the architect. Joan, could you put the front photo back up? I just want to say, we're here, the owners are here in the audience, if you have any questions. One thing we wanted to bring up for discussion, though, is Planning Condition Number Five, deals with the garage door. I understand in the code, there's the mention of the roll-up door to be changed out. It would be the owner's hope if they could keep the existing front garage door and restore it, and some of the neighbors have commented to them as well, so I just wanted to bring that up for maybe a discussion amongst you guys when you're, when you're looking through the project. Any other questions? We're here in the audience.
Anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Joe, why don't you start us off?
Well, I do, as the report mentions, this is a minor addition. The only note I had was that I wanted to make sure that that tree was protected, and based on its location, it looks like there isn't too much danger to the tree, but we would do well to somehow ensure that attention be given to that. The neighborhood looks like it could tolerate certainly parking in the driveway, or even additional parking at street side, so I, I don't have any, and the addition does seem well-adapted to the rest of the house, so the only problem I have is just to make sure that the tree survives nicely and thrives.
Trying to understand a little bit better. There's single parking for one car in the garage? The other parking spot would be right in front of the garage?
Yes, sir, in tandem in the driveway.
Okay, and, because I, I rode my bike over there to check it out, and I actually walked into the creek and stuff. So, you know, that, that, that spot is a little, like, when you, when you come off Java and make that turn, and there's that little thing, so it's kind of tricky. You gotta make sure that, you know, you don't want things out in the street there, okay? The other question is, there's that area that looks like it's, you know, that DG, yeah, that area. That area right there, is that used for parking right now?
I have seen vehicles parked there, but as the city, we will not permit parking in the fifty-foot esch a buffer.
Okay, so that's part of your esch a buffer. And one of the things that, when you guys looked at this, if you look down where those coverages are, and it's a pretty steep bag, you, I know that there was like that big pine tree and stuff, there's a lot of growth there that's kind of keeping that hillside together. Is there concern there for, like, erosion?
I mean, not related to the project as a whole. I don't know that they're experiencing any issues with erosion, although they're here in the audience, they could probably answer the question better than us. I didn't notice any when I was out there, but I wasn't really specifically looking for that when I visited the site a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, because we have a couple of, like, previous, they had a bathroom addition, right? And there was given an exemption at that time, is that correct?
Non-conforming structures are allowed a one-time expansion of habitable square footage under twenty-five percent before having to come before the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit.
Okay, and so that's why we're here, because they had it once?
Because they had their one-time free pass.
I was just trying to understand and process it a little bit. Okay, okay, good. Yeah, that said, I don't have a big issue with the, with the project at all, and if they don't have, if they're comfortable with the erosion, it just, I always kind of look at that, because I look at, you know, we get these downpours, and right now, it's like, oh, we have the hundred-year flood. Well, the hundred-year floods are happening, you know, faster. Anyway, that's it.
Michael?
I think it's a, it's a nice addition to a, to a nice-sized house, the existing concrete in the front. It looks like the addition doesn't even take up the amount of space that's already paved in the front, so I think the tree probably has a good shot at surviving because it's already been paved over closer to the tree. The one thing I wanted to make sure of, right now, I don't see anything that suggests that there is a replacement of the high CMU wall. It looks like you've got a screen wall along Sandalwood, and it looks like with the, with the addition coming out, that's all being removed, and then there's a concrete courtyard in the front that fronts the new bedroom doors and then the entrance to the house. You're not putting a fence around that area. Well, not, that's, I guess I would, I would say I would like to know that question when we, if they come up, to talk about that. That's a question I have. Is it, is that a good time for them to answer that?
Can, yes.
Yeah, we, I think we have actually two questions at this point, so I will reopen public comment. The question was, one, have there been any issues with erosion of the creek bank? And secondly, I guess, what is the fate of the CMU wall that is existing?
Those are great questions, and ones we've thought about, thank you, for them. First of all, with respect to erosion, this was obviously a winter where we had a lot of rain. We really were watching this very closely. We saw no issues whatsoever in terms of erosion. It looks like those Monterey pines have really held in the soil, and our plan is to put native plants in there that will hold the soil to the extent that there ever would be a problem. With respect to the concrete finstration, the wall there, we'd actually hope to be able to incorporate that into, we are going to have a fence that goes across there. We are not able, I think, because of it being an esch, to put the, that same type of wall across the area that you talked about earlier where the cars were parked. We essentially are planning on putting in a wooden fence that would be consistent across the front of the, into the area that was identified earlier, and then around the courtyard. We'd like to use the brick if we could, and that was kind of our intention originally. But we want something that would be consistent across the front, in the courtyard area, and then for the fence leading kind of northwest across that, that area there. That answers your question.
Unfortunately, it does. Not what I wanted to hear, but the concern I have is that we have policies about fences in the fronts of properties.
Correct.
And this is one that's considerably higher than the, what is it, four feet, Scott, for the front fences?
Four feet, if it's fifty percent or more open to the passage of the area.
And so this is probably at least five now, if not six. So I would be concerned that we weren't shown anything like that on the documents, if you're saying that's what you would like to put back in there.
No, no, we understand that there's a height limitation. Already, as it sits, it's higher than what's allowed, so that's one reason we need to remove it. We would comply with all the height restrictions.
Okay. And then the other, the only other thing I would ask is, is did you consider doing pervious paving in the front in lieu of a new slab?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Well, the front courtyard is described as a new concrete slab, which means all the water is just going to pool there, wash off, and you've got one of the spots in town where, you know, you probably can percolate underneath the stone, so if you'd come in with a pervious paving in there that would let the water get back into the ground instead of forcing runoff?
I think we'd be open to whatever staff would recommend.
Okay. That's all I have.
I have one question I forgot to ask before, as long as you're here. Is there a pergola somewhere?
Pergola?
Uh-huh. Yeah, the, Sheet Three is described as front elevation and pergola information. Is that just a typo?
I'm not sure.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I like the project. I really think, not only does it provide more useful living area, I think it adds additional interest to the front elevation of the house. It increases articulation, it's, you know, it's, it's just more interesting, and it sort of balances out the garage on the other side, it, you know, it's symmetric. I do have a question about the garage, though, and I want to bring this up just for discussion among the commission, okay? Because I question how useful that, or, yeah, how useful that space is in the garage because, because of the garage door. The garage door is only eight feet wide. Now, a mid-size automobile, a Chevy Malibu, for example, is about seventy inches wide without the mirrors, okay? So with the mirrors, you're talking about five inches of clearance on either side going through the door, which seems tight to me. I mean, I think-- I mean, I think certain people would be reluctant, you know, to take that on. And, you know, while we're looking at this, there is the opportunity to reframe that door at not a huge cost and, you know, provide a greater degree of utility. In other words, the garage would be usable for more automobiles, more different types of automobiles than it is now. I don't think we can get full width, but I think we could get maybe nine feet pretty easily. So I'm just kind of bringing that up for, to see what people think about that. You know, it doesn't, it wouldn't involve really major reconstruction. It would involve reframing and a new garage door. And I realize that, you know, they were able to pull a vehicle in there. I'm not really sure what kind of car that is, or how, you know, whether it's, you know, what size it is, I can't really tell. And there is, you know, there is a fair amount of width, probably, this says nine feet, six inches, but it's probably, you know, where the doors, where the car doors are, it's probably another foot. It's probably 10 and 1/2 feet width inside the garage. So that's not so much of an issue as getting the car in and out. So I just kind of wanted to have a discussion about that, see what the commission thinks in terms of maybe alleviating that condition a little bit.
Well, you know, I think that's a worthwhile thought because the first thing that came to my mind was with this tandem parking is, is tandem parking really used on a regular basis because of the inconvenience of having to back one car to get the car out of the garage? And I'm mindful that by granting that kind of an exception, we probably are at times increasing the parking on street side. So, and anything that would increase the likelihood of both cars, or at least one car remaining on the property when it's not being used is a good thing.
I'm looking at this picture, and just so I could be clear on what you're saying. Where that woman's standing and then behind there, you could see where that header is, right, where the garage?
Right.
You're saying basically pulling that all the way to the end?
Well, not all the way, widening the opening. You'd need, right now, according to the plans, it's about one foot four inches from the interior wall to the edge of the door opening. So you could pull it back to maybe, you know, eight inches or something like that on the inside, on the inside.
And then so you got, expanding that, that's what you're saying?
So then you'd get an extra, you'd get an extra foot.
I, I'm open either way, really. I'm not, I look at this garage as perfect for motorcycles.
I'm afraid I can't, as someone who can barely fit their person in their garage right now, I can't ask people to change the garage.
Well, yeah, I'm looking at the pictures and I'm going, this garage is remarkably free of stuff, you know? There's no mattresses, there's no, you know? I mean, the other way, the other way to look at it is that, I guess, the other way to look at it, I suppose, I mean, we have the owner now that's saying, look, the garage is fine by us. We don't have a problem with the width of the garage, you know, we're good with it. So, I mean, the other way to look at it is, you know, if some, at some point down the line, the house is sold, and those people happen to have a Malibu or an Impala or something like that, that they'd like to park in the garage, they can fix it, you know?
I think it's a market decision. You know, in the future, if something would change hands, someone likely would improve things like that. It looks in the plans like there's a small storage room off to the side, and I could see somebody, you know, replacing the garage with something different down the line. To me, the thing that's germane is, does the new bedroom require us to go back and adjust the parking? And I think we've accepted the fact we're not going to enlarge the garage to a two-car garage, so we're going to accept a car likely parking in the driveway. The street conditions around there don't look necessarily conducive, like there's a lot of room to park on the street. That's kind of a narrower passageway in there. I would like to make sure we don't park in the Esha because of this. I don't know what we have to put in there as a condition, but that'd be something I'd want to see to help us on that. So I don't want to necessarily pressure the garage change. I think it's, if staff reported that as something they wanted to propose and there's support for it on here, I think that's fine, but it's not a deal breaker to me. I'm more concerned about getting the site upgraded in terms of its performance versus the concrete and the parking potentially in the right-of-way, or in the Esha.
What do you think, Joe?
Well, I think it's, in the scheme of things, it's probably not a significant expense to widen the garage. I went down to look at the property and I wasn't even thinking about parking on the Esha, but I would like to make sure that that doesn't happen and certainly that, you know, we don't contribute to that by this decision. And we also have to think in terms of subsequent owners, too, and, you know, our ability to sort of monitor these things. And I think we would do well to encourage this applicant and future applicants to make use of the garage for the automobile as opposed to what garages are typically used for. So I don't think it's an inordinate thing to ask. And likewise, you know, the permeable surfaces, I think that's a good idea, too. And again, if it's an additional expense, I think it's negligible to, you know, solid concrete.
Scott, you know, from a functional standpoint, and not parking in the Esha, that's where that gray area, would it, would you, would we consider a small fence there?
I think, yeah, they actually was talking about doing that, and they're nodding their heads now. So they're suggesting that they're wanting, they're going to put some fencing over there. You could add a condition that they're not supposed to park vehicles on it. I think that's fine. Yeah, I mean, I think that's where it was kind of going, because of the conversation that, when the applicant got up here, Mr. Frye, as always his indication was he was going to put fencing over there. To make sure you can't park cars, I think it's fine to add a condition that you can't do that because the code says you're not supposed to do that.
So it would be no issue, it would have to be written in there that you have a little fence in the buffer zone or whatever?
If you want, so in the Esha buffer, you can place fencing. It's one of the things that's allowed there. Parking spaces are not. So you can condition the project that way or not. If they were to park cars there and we were to get a complaint, we would tell them to stop doing that, and we would have all the justification and teeth we needed to make that happen. So it's kind of up to you. It kind of puts people on notice, and these permits run with the land, so if you want to put it there, that's fine. Yeah, not all right.
Well, then, kind of going along that line, would, if they were to do that out of the CMU that matches what they have in the front yard, would that then be a fence or would it be a wall? Or, I mean, would that be allowable or would that not be allowable?
It's one of the types of fencing material that we allow, so it would be okay. I mean, I think you just can't put like chain link fencing, it's like that, or code doesn't allow for that. But it would be a type of fencing material that would be permitted.
Okay.
So it would be fine if that's what they wanted to do.
Yeah, I, and then what about the, I guess the other issue that we need to discuss is the request from the applicant to not replace the current garage door with a rolling garage door? Is that something, that's something that's required by code, is the automatic rolling garage door, is that?
And we were picking it up as part of the parking exception component, probably because it exists today, you have the discretion, you have the discretion to allow them to leave it or require them to comply with the code because of the parking exception requirement. You're in a, if it was new, then you don't have a choice, you have to do it. But they're not proposing to touch that. So as it sits there today, it's just existing nonconforming, as is the house. So that's fine, and it can remain. You have leverage because they're asking for a parking exception, so that might be something that you want them to do. Not unlike the, you know, concern that you noted about the width of the garage door and do we need to do something with that? I had gone by there and looked at it before, and then Joan had told me about your concern this afternoon. I walked in and asked her if you'd come in yet, to make any comments. I'm familiar with his patterns as it relates to comments on projects, and I'd been tied up most of the day, so I didn't see him. And she mentioned this, and I said, well, let's contact the applicants and see if that thing is even usable, which is hence the pictures you got. They ran around kind of at 11th hour and were able to, Joan was able to get ahold of them, and they were able to show you that they can, it can be used. And so that was, I think, useful information to provide to the commission, you know, I mean, whether you want it to be wider or not is up to you, but certainly it seems like it's functionable the way that it is. It might be a little tight to get in there, but they certainly can.
Well, I'll just, I'll speak up on this one first. You know, to me, it just, it seems it's kind of either-or, you know what I'm saying? In other words, it doesn't make, if we're, if we have some concerns about the eight-foot width, it doesn't make sense to make them put up a new garage, new rolling garage door that's still eight feet wide, you know what I'm saying? They might as well just keep the one they've got. If we're, you know, if we're going to make them widen the garage, which I don't hear a lot of support for, widen the opening, which I don't hear a lot of support for, then absolutely, I mean, because a rolling door can get much higher than that swinging-type door. You know, so it seems to me it's kind of a package deal, you know, you either do both or you, and, you know, again, the more I think about it, you know, just kind of thinking it through, if someone were to buy this house five years from now, or 10 years from now, or whatever, and they went, I can't get my car in the garage, you know, they would have the option to do this and, you know, to put whatever garage door there, you know, is aesthetic to them, is pleasing to them, rather than being stuck with one that we mandated for their benefit five years previously, you know? So it may be that, that this is not ripe, you know, and I still see it as being somewhat of a problem, but it may not be ripe to address it at this point in the process. The, okay, is that agreeable with everybody? Is that line of?
And their intent was to restore it, and you couldn't see it on the picture that we showed you on the screen, but in your package, you can see that the door has kind of a design on it.
A sun, sun kind of thing, yeah.
With a raise coming off it, which is a kind of unique feature to the house. I mean, it's what I saw when I first drove up, that was the first thing I noticed, so thinking that it was unique, so I could sort of understand that.
I guess the last thing I want to ask is, the garage, the driveway technically is in the 50-foot setback, parts of it. Are we ecologically better off to say we want that to be concrete so that it's, if there's oil and things like that, it's not going into the pervious pavement into the ground, that it's going out to the street, which I guess goes into the creek anyway, another direction? I guess I'm trying to think about if I want to propose a condition to provide permeable pavers for the courtyard, would we want to extend it? It doesn't look like they're replacing the concrete drive, but it does look like they're replacing the concrete pad.
Both of which are correct, those statements are correct. They're not replacing the driveway, but they are replacing the concrete pad.
Yeah, yeah. I would just advocate for the pervious pavement in the patio pad because I think it would help the tree recover at some point.
And I think, are we sort of all in agreement on that? I see nodding heads all around, so that needs to be added as a condition. And then the, I mean, in terms of the tree itself, the obvious thing, one obvious thing we could do is to require them to put up the orange construction fencing, you know, at some distance from the tree in order to protect it from getting run over or whatever during the construction, if that's something that you think would be helpful.
I'm sure.
Could we have the architect come up here?
Sure.
About the regarded tree? Thank you for indulging me. Chris, is the tree going to require any sort of trimming to allow the construction of the addition?
I don't think so.
No, for the most part, it's up pretty high.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can see the height there, maybe the bottom branch that's sticking out towards the house might need to be trimmed up a little bit. But for the most part, the addition is the same height as the house. You can see the house is pretty low-sloped roof.
Pretty low-sloped, yeah.
Pretty minimal. And it, like Michael said, it doesn't quite take up the space that wall takes up. It kind of steps in and out following the angled front property line.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I was just seeing if there was going to be, I thought about it. I thought about it when I went out there, too, and it looked like it was going to be, it wasn't going to be a problem, you know, from what I could tell and based on the slope of the roof that was proposed, but figured they'd looked at it more than I had, so.
But you've probably got something at your discretion from some other project you can put in that's tree protection during construction, just as a comment, standard comment. And, you know, the only other thing I would propose is that they give you a plan of the fencing so that you, at your discretion, can approve that. I don't think it has to come back, but my sense is because the bedroom has two large doors that go out to that patio, there's going to be a concern on the part of them to make that whole thing work as a front entrance, and that's a major component we're not seeing. And I think the house has been designed in a very nice way. I don't think that the fence would, if the architect's involved, would necessarily be a thing that would have to come back here, but I'd be concerned that you see it so that it meets the city's requirements for height and things like that.
We could.
So do we want to require that fence or do we want to allow that fence?
I'm fine to allow it. Well, I'm fine to allow it, but if they want to build it, I want to see, I want Scott and the staff to see it.
But if the purpose of the fence is to prevent parking in the Esha buffer?
Oh, there's two different purposes. I think when you see the fence or the wall that's there now, if you can imagine that side that's facing us, 90 degrees to the garage door, that's where the two large doors are to the bedroom. So that's got a pretty good exposure to the street, so I'm sure there's going to be some concern about landscaping and fencing to give some sense of privacy for that room. That, I'm just concerned that because it's such a small lot, it's such a beautiful neighborhood, we want to make sure staff sees that rather than it gets bought at Home Depot and brought But I wouldn't bring it back for that. I don't think we're.
It's an easy enough condition to comply with. I mean, we've heard the concern.
But I think there's a second fence that's on the other side of the driveway that also I would leave at your discretion to be designed that prohibits parking inside the setback.
Right, and that's the one that I'm asking, do we want to require that?
I think so, you know, especially since we're allowing the garage door to remain.
Do we have consensus on that? So there should be another condition that they're?
The fence one will be two parts.
Two-part fence condition.
Two-part fence condition. One dealing with the, with the, required fencing for the Esha, that they submit that for our review and approval, along with the fencing adjacent to the addition.
Right.
We got it. We got it.
So what we're adding is the permeable paving, the required fencing, and the required review of additional fencing on the opposite side of the driveway.
Tree protection?
If they choose to do that, if they choose to put that.
And tree protection? So we got?
And tree protection, right.
And the removal of the condition requiring the replacement of the garage door?
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. So any further issues? Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
I'll, I'll try to make the motion. I make a motion to approve resolution number PC 1617 with the removal of one of the conditions about removing the door and addition of the conditions with regards to fencing and pervious paving as stated earlier or as noted. And it's a development permit CPO 542. Conditional use permit UPO 477 on Saddlewood Avenue.
And parking exception AD 0-118.
And parking exception AD 0-118.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, can we have a real call, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Sodowsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Engraffia.
Aye.
And Chairman Teft.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're into this two hours and 10 minutes. Can we take a 10-minute break until 8:20? The Planning Commission is back in session and we are moving on to item number B2, public hearing item number B2, which is case number UP 0-462 and CP 0-523 concerning a site at 2214 Coral Avenue here in Morro Bay. And Joan is going to enlighten us on this one as well.
Thank you, Chairman Teft. Applicants Bill and Donna Barker are seeking a conditional use permit and coastal development permit approval for the construction of a new single-family residence on a vacant parcel at 2214 Coral in the southern cluster of the Cloisters subdivision. This slide shows the existing 7,603 square foot parcel located on the corner of Emerald Circle and Coral Avenue towards the southeastern corner of the subdivision. The site plan illustrates the 1,920 square foot residence with a 506 square foot attached garage and a 97 square foot porch. Note the defined entryway. You cannot quite see the trellis structure on this. I will point it out in a subsequent slide. This is the floor plan. Further, it illustrates the recessed and trellised front entryway and the rear patio also has a trellis, as you can see at the top of the, of the floor plan there. There's 188 square foot interior courtyard located at the center. It provides a nice wind protection for the, for the residents. These are the elevations. This design is in compliance with the residential design guidelines and has been approved by the Cloisters Design Review Committee. It's the front and rear elevations. And the north and south elevations. The architecture of the proposed residence is craftsman in style. It includes variable ridge heights, trellis structures, as discussed in the front and the rear, vertically oriented multi-painted windows, a craftsman-style front door with dentil details, as you can see on the color and materials board with the plans. Rafter details and the, as said before, the design has been approved by the Cloisters Architectural Review Board. Landscape plan is required for this, this project. It does focus on drought-tolerant plants and native species. No sod will be utilized, and again, it's compliant with the design guidelines pertinent to landscape plans. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt resolution 1717, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for permit number UP 0462 and CP 0523 for the proposed project at 2214 Coral. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Let me ask at this point if there are any ex parte communications to be debulished? Seeing none, then are there questions for staff?
Joan, when, when we see a, a project that identifies a habitable space that could be a bedroom and identifies it as an office, is there any kind of thing that comes into effect with our planning criteria?
No, sir.
So three-bedroom versus two-bedroom and an office doesn't make any difference in terms of parking or anything else that we're looking at?
No, sir, not for a single-family residence.
Okay. And I assume office is not implying that there's a business running out of it, that we need to worry about that?
No, sir, we do not.
And businesses are, you can operate businesses out of your home. You can get a home occupation permit and do that if you comply with the requirements of the home occupation ordinance. It's an, it's an allowed thing to have if you did.
Now, I just always, it's always interesting to me when we see office because there's a lot of times a space isn't habitable, but somebody wants to use it, so they'll call it an office because you can't technically call it a bedroom. But this is one that's a beautiful space. There could be a bedroom, but it doesn't have any impact on the way the parking or anything else goes on. So the neighbors would be, should be happy about that.
Any other questions? If not, then we will open public comment and offer the applicant or applicant representative a chance to speak first if you would like to do so.
I'm the civil engineer that did the landscape plan and also the site plan. And so I'd just like to make note of the fact that we are utilizing pervious pavers and also all roof runoff will be directed into the landscape vegetation to make use of kind of a gray water system.
Very well. Any other comments on this project? Seeing none, then I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. I think it, Michael, I think it's your turn.
But it's, I, I just appreciate the care that went into the Cloisters. I, I think that's a great example of, you know, most of these are single-level houses that the yards are really well thought out and the public space is well thought out. And, you know, I do like this idea of the, when we start to do these spaces that move into the, the house like this, the idea that you're, you're moving around a space that's, that's really beautiful. And I just think it's a very nice house. And I, I don't have any comments if, if the Cloisters review group is happy with the mix of materials and things like that. I don't have any comments on it past that.
Richard?
Yeah, I, I, I like courtyards. I think they're pretty cool. And it was good to hear that you're using the water for the landscaping. I like that. And regarding the house, I, I think it's a good project. I, I got a quick question though for either one of you guys. When this Cloisters, when it first went in, I remember my, my wife worked in the courts and one of the things that was, it was a contingent, it went back and forth for years and, and I think Judge Hammer was the one that was on this one. And one of the things that they agreed or was a condition was that no two stories. And yet, when you cruise around there, you see two stories. How did that happen?
So, so the, the permit is actually, the coastal development permit for the tract is actually with the coastal commission and not with the city. So it went through appeal processes and landed at coastal. As part of the review process, they, I think, cut about 100, maybe more, houses out of the development. And, and they clustered them away from the environmentally sensitive habitat areas and allocated and identified which lots could be two stories and which lots were required to be one. And they're, and they're all identified. And so some lots are allowed to have two-story houses. And so that was approved that way. And there's a list of ones that can be two stories and a list of ones that can be one.
Okay, okay. I, I just wanted an understanding, you know? Going back to this project, yeah, I, I like it. I don't have much more to say about it.
Joe?
Well, I, I was particularly interested because this, your house presents two facades because of its corner lot. And upon, you know, visiting the neighborhood, there's quite a bit of architectural detail in the neighboring homes. And I think, and I, and I see a suitable amount of architectural detail in, in the design for yours, so that's a, a nice match. Looking at the 3D drawing, I had difficulty sort of seeing what the, the front door and the, from the street would look like. My eyes always go to the front door and the immediate environment. And I, I noticed that the front door is a little off-center and I looked at the plans and I could see the explanation as to why it's a little bit off-center. I appreciated the, the department's addition of, you know, raising the pedestals. I thought that was a, a nice touch. You know, and, you know, ultimately, the, the test is, you know, whether they're making a reasonable, good faith effort to comply with what are the pretty detailed design standards of the community. And, and I think the, the answer is, is obvious that they, they are. The, the only thought I had and was just, you know, my suggestion was it might be nice to continue that wainscoting on either side of the door, just to sort of break up the, stuck along that front door facade. But again, that would just be a suggestion. It's, certainly wouldn't require that. That's really all I had to say.
Well, you know, I think that in terms of neighborhood compatibility, I think this is very compatible with what we see in the Cloisters, which is a fairly high standard of development. In terms of our residential design guidelines, though, I do have a little bit of a problem in that, you know, one of our, one of our design guidelines is that there should be a similar level of detail and finish on all sides of the house. And, you know, when I look at the right elevation and the rear elevation, they appear to be much plainer. They, they, they do not appear to have the detailing that we see on the left elevation and the front elevation. And, so I don't really think they're, they're compliant with our design guidelines. I, I don't, I don't know what criteria the Architectural Review Committee at the Cloisters uses, but I would, and again, I would not hold up necessarily the approval. I would be willing to allow staff to work with the applicants to, you know, to, to work through that condition and, and, and sort of make the styling more consistent all the way around. The, yeah, if you, if you look at two elevations, they, it almost looks like a different house than if you look at the other two elevations. So, you know, I'd just like to add that as a condition that, that we get some more of that detailing onto the other parts of the house.
Dr., I'm just going to show you on the plan. Are you thinking maybe extending that detail across the, what was it, wainscoting detail or?
Well, yeah, I mean, for example, on this, on the right elevation, you really don't, you really have none of the shingle detail that you have on the other elevations. Here you have it on the roof, so it's not, not quite as big a deal, but, and, and again, I don't, I don't know that I would, I mean, I'm not an, I'm not an architect, you know? Michael, Michael might, might speak to how that might be done, but I would be willing to leave it up to their architect and staff to come together, you know, with a, you know, simply specify the direction we'd like to go and allow that to be worked out at the staff level.
The only thing I'd comment on is, is I'm not a style person. I think style's kind of a facetious way to talk about architecture. The fact that the two facades are really different is, is usually done because of a cost reason. My own particular ethic is I would not use any stucco. I don't think stucco is a renewable material. Stucco is invasive with, you know, construction methods of extraction that are not very sustainable in a place with lots of earthquakes. You get micro-cracking over time. You're going to have to repair it. I'd be much happier if the whole thing was shingle. I've, I've got a three-story shingle house that I live in that I reshingled and that's my own aesthetic. So I don't have, to me, it's a tremendous amount of detail on the house already with the way the house is articulated with massing and things like that. You know, I think typically these days, I think the, the thinking with this kind of style package is that the wainscoting is a, is an upgrade. So what I would say is if you've got the wainscoting in the front with a shingle over top of it, that's something that I would say, well, when you get away from the place where it's important to have the wainscoting, then you should go all the way to shingle. So I'm not a fan of stucco. If anybody's watched the Planning Commission the last few years, I'm not much of a stucco person. But that'd be my only comment. But the Cloisters has one of the highest design guideline things embedded in its, in its, in its guidelines that they, they have review boards there looking at this. And I, I think the massing of the house is completely consistent with what we're talking about. I think the material package is, is, is perhaps open to criticism that Dr. Teft is there, but, you know, I, I don't feel like we need to ask them to raise the bar on this thing. I think they've already gone to an extreme extent. If, if I had a wish list, I wish we would have photovoltaics on it. That's all. I hate to see this kind of, this kind of level of construction done without trying to offset our, our carbon footprint from some kind of power plant or something like that. But I, I wouldn't condition that. And, and I think if you look at the plan, the, the different moves on the facades and the extension, the two facades that we're seeing, the bulk of the stucco on are, are the modest ones that are the side yards adjacent to another home and, and the rear yard that also faces the, the side yard of another home. So I don't think we have a lot of visibility of those faces that we're talking about. I think that the beauty of the Cloisters is some of these common spaces between houses are modest and they tend to be taken up to a high level of care in terms of landscape treatment. And that's what appeals to me the most is that it may not be the material, materiality I would propose, but there's care to every square inch of things down there because it's all valuable property. It's all valuable to the way the home presents itself. So I, I, I understand the critique, but I don't feel we need to extend that personally.
Scott, I got a, a quick question. It pertains to, a few years ago, there was a house in the Cloisters that they needed to raise the foundation because there was some issues of the mold and water issues. And, and what I'm thinking is, is, you know, the Cloisters are the low area, I think in sea level rise, you know, climate change and all that stuff. And has, when, when we're looking at these kind of projects, these new projects, are you sensitive to that?
Yes. We've, so we ran the first model on sea level rise and they've come out with some new direction that sea level's rising faster than we initially thought. And so we're running, we're, yeah, and, and we're running a second, we're doing it, we've done a secondary run on using the new. run on using the new science, new numbers. And it's still fine in this area. It doesn't come into the Cloisters subdivision. It does touch, run more deeply 100 years out in the Beachcomber area on those frontline houses. So we'll probably have to tackle that from a policy standpoint in the general plan as to what that looks like. Because while that's beyond the horizon of the general plan, it's not beyond the horizon of the life of the house. So that might be, you know, as we get the general plan adopted, those will be some conversation, you know, put in place and the policies put in place. Those will be some conversations we are having. But they do not, that effect does not affect this tract in this location. So, yeah, I mean, so the answer to your question, that was a long answer, but we are paying attention to it because we do have the information. And if we do have the information, these projects are all subject to environmental review and CEQA. These are typically exempt if you don't have these problems. But if you do have the problems, then they're not exempt. And if we have the knowledge of issues, then we need to look at that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Question, the Morro Bay guidelines, are they that unequivocal in terms of the same level of design on all four sides? Or is there any consideration to visibility? I simply, I simply don't know.
It suggests wrapping around corners. You don't have the blank face like this without the, the same treatment that's on the other sides. It talks about doing those things. In this, in this instance, probably that doesn't necessarily make sense because of the visibility of the elevations in some, in some instances. You wrap it around and stop it, but it's visible to the street. Like, the back of this house faces the side of another house, but you can see the, almost, you're going to be able to see almost the entire back of a house. So that would actually end up probably kind of looking odd if you just wrapped it around the corner and stopped it. You usually use those scenarios when you have rectangular lots side by side, and you get it around the corners and wrap it, then you don't see it because you have five-foot side yard setbacks on another house right next to it. And so it's less obvious as opposed to, this is much more visible. But it is, but Chair Teft is correct. Our design guidelines do speak to it. I just think the application here may not be as relevant given the, the visibility of the rear elevation and what that would mean if you just wrapped it around. Now, if you took it full across the back, then that would make more sense. It's just, some of the suggestions there where you're wrapping it around corners and not stopping it at the edge probably don't make sense here just because of how visible it is. And I would also note that it's the same concern I had, and I actually talked to Joan about it. And then I said, ah, you know, when we had the other house that's one block over that didn't get approved, I did a pretty thorough look-through of the houses over there and sort of remembered that there are a lot of houses that have similar detailing on them in the, in the tract. In fact, after I okayed the staff report, I drove out there and drove through the track again. And I was like, there's a whole bunch of them out there that look very similar to this.
Yeah, but they were built before the design guidelines were adopted.
Correct. No, I acknowledge that. I, I do, certainly.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I don't think it's fair to staff for us to have that as a design guideline and then go, eh, we don't really care about that. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we, either we do care about it or we don't care about it. And, you know, I personally think it's an issue of authenticity. You know, I mean, in the 1920s, 1930s, 1940s, the back of the house was pretty much built the same way as the front of the house, you know. And it seems to be a modern thing that we've gotten into as a society of, you know, building houses which are almost Hollywood sets. They, you know, they look totally different on the front than they do everywhere else. And I'm not sure that's a trend that we really want to encourage, particularly if the rear elevation is going to be visible from the street.
Well, I see that. I mean, if the guidelines are that explicit and there isn't, you know, an overriding reason why to make an exception, perhaps we shouldn't make an exception. Yeah.
Can I open up the public comment? There's no, is it?
Wait, wait, wait. Please, let me just open public comment and come to the microphone, please, because otherwise you don't get recorded.
Yeah, thank you.
I would just like to point out that the rear of the home isn't visible from the street. The portion that is visible would be the pergola and also the, the back roofline there where there is the, the shaker-style shingle on the rear of the home. So, yeah, so that view to the west from Emerald Circle, the pergola and the, also the ridge line of the room, but that shaker-style shingle would be visible from the street. And that, the fence blocks the lower portion that is stucco.
Right. Okay, thank you. So we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission. But again, that doesn't really address the issue of authenticity. You know what I'm saying? Of authenticity of design. And, you know, nor, nor does it give, nor does it give very clear direction to staff as to, as to what to do with that design guideline. If, you know, if, if we don't believe that's an issue, then I'm going to suggest we bring the design guidelines back and do something about it. If we do think it's an issue and at the time that we did, then we need to be consistent.
Doctor, when, yeah, when you're, when, I agree with you. I agree. It's no sense having something on the books that you're going to ignore. And that way, it doesn't make any sense. With regards to, I'm just trying to think of a, what are we maybe suggesting? Maybe putting like the, the shingle, put a shingle accent on the, on the stucco wall there in the rear elevation, maybe bringing it around and on the right elevation? And then leaving that maybe up to staff's discretion on, on how to accent it out possibly?
Well, no, I'm not suggesting any specific change. All I'm suggesting is that there's a marked difference in the appearance of two of these elevations versus the other two, and that staff can work with the applicant to resolve that or to minimize that discrepancy.
Okay, okay, got it.
I would suggest that the area for them to look to would be the other two elevations.
Yes.
Exactly. I mean, balancing things out is probably where we would want to be. Yeah.
Shingles last 30 years. You don't have to do anything to them. They weather beautifully. Everybody loves them. The texture is unbelievable. It's a renewable material. That's all I'll say.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there's, there's no, there's no doubt that, there's no doubt that, you know, this is being called a craftsman-style house, you know. But there's no doubt that it's a 2017 interpretation of a craftsman-style house, you know, which, which is appropriate. I mean, this is 2017. It's not 1917. You know, it's a, so, so, you know, I don't think, you know, I mean, I lived a lot of years in South Pasadena, and there's not a lot of stucco-style, stucco craftsman houses there. But, but, you know, but I realize, you know, this is, this is sort of inspired by craftsman style. So I, it's like, you know, I just, I just, but again, I, you know, I just think, I just don't, I just think, I don't see any, I don't see any real reason why there should be, you know, I mean, I think the design of the house is great. You know, we're just talking about materials here. I just don't see any reason for that break in the detail and the materials that are, that are being proposed. And again, we're leaving considerable latitude for staff to work this out with the applicant. We're not specifying a particular solution. But also, you know, I think, I think this would be a good time, maybe to, maybe at this point, if we do think that is a valid consideration, that that's a valid design point, that this would be a good time to reinforce with staff that, that we do feel that way. You know, because despite, despite that being in the design guidelines, we're still seeing a lot of houses come through that are, don't necessarily conform to that very well.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll stand by what I said before. That is a far different standard than the rest of the houses in the subdivision have been held to. Hence the reason I found it a concern, but I let it ride because this would be a deviation from what's been approved out there, a substantial one, quite frankly. Because a lot of them, the materials stop at the front, and they don't wrap around to the sides, even on the ones where it would be appropriate to do so. They really, you know, there's a mix of siding and stucco and all kinds of different things out there that sort of stop at the edges of the buildings and don't continue down. So, don't have a problem, because we do have the design guidelines and they are there, no problem going there. But that was the reason why we didn't go there in this instance.
Yeah. But isn't the reality, I mean, we're in the process of rewriting the zoning ordinance. Isn't the reality that a year from now, there will be a lot of things which will be different than what currently exists?
Yes. I mean, that's for sure. I mean, I mean, I think that's sort of obvious to the, to the case of, you know, as it relates to the general plan, LCP update.
I think, Doctor, you bring up a very good point. In the spirit of consistency and, and what we're, we're using, I don't think it's, I don't think it's out of bounds or over, overly burdensome to maybe, you know, give you that leeway to maybe come up with something.
Well, I think you have all the discretion in the world to do that. I think that's completely within the realm of, you know, what the planning commission can take a look at, and even more so based on the design guidelines that are in place now.
Right.
But to be clear, in the Cloisters, there haven't been approved projects that didn't comply with the new guidelines? Or is that, is that the case? Once the new guidelines are in place and people had noticed, they have been observed or not?
Well, we've only had the one house that didn't get approved. That's one block over from this one on a similar corner. And then, and then this one.
Okay.
I mean, the only, the only point I was making is that's a different, it's a, it's a much different standard than what the other homes out there have been held to. And so, and so, yes, it is a change. And, and, and one, from our standpoint, it's not a problem implementing it, but just understanding that we recognized that when we went through the, you know, the process of preparing the staff report and reviewing the materials.
But it's, but it's true that the, the new or revised guidelines are a change from, from the status quo. Or not the status quo, but they're changed from the past.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, and I suspect that's probably not a situation that will be unique to the Cloisters. I mean, that, that's probably going to be the, the case in other neighborhoods in the city as well.
Well, I think it's a lot, the Cloisters has design guidelines. The rest of the tracks in the, in the, in the city pretty much do not have that. I mean, we have some, you know, condo subdivision stuff that have requirements to what things look like. But for the most part, you don't have that. So we would rely solely on those requirements as opposed to the development pattern that was created in a tract that has design guidelines and a design review committee.
Yeah, but there's not, there is not any suggestion that the, the existing guidelines at the Cloisters would take precedent over the overall guidelines from Morro Bay?
That was not, not the point that I was making. Yeah, I agree. I said, you have all the discretion to use it. And in fact, it was something that I took note of when I reviewed it. It just, after looking out there, I said, we haven't gone down this road yet here. That's probably more a decision for the planning commission to make. I thought it would be raised. I was not surprised that Chair Teft brought it up. I mean, it was something, it was the first thing I noticed when I looked at the plan.
I guess the only thing I would add is, in all honesty, and I don't mean to be rude, all this is decoration to me. It isn't authentic. It isn't honest. It's, it's about decoration. What do you want to put on the front of this building or the side? So visually, I think we can say it's authentic if it does the things that we're talking about in the design guideline. The design guidelines have nothing to do with authenticity of construction or any kind of architectural value other than a simple visual one relating to historic styles and, and consistency of a visual program. So I don't have any trouble, you know, succumbing to Dr. Teft's wiles here of aesthetic, of aesthetic choices. But in all, in all honesty, it's simpler, simpler is better, you know. And, and I think that the design guidelines, I don't want to disrespect the design guidelines because I think the hope is that we can encourage architects to actually do things that are authentic, which would be to understand the nature of the place. And the craftsman tradition is certainly one that I, I heartily endorse for us to continue to evolve and, and have as, as part of our, of our community. Because I think it's the one in a state that at one time and in the future will have wood resources. It's, it's the way to go. You know, wood, wood is the future, one way or another. And so I'm happy to, to retract my disapproval of Dr. Teft's defense of the guidelines. I'll go along with the committee.
So, yeah. Let me just throw out a little wording. You know, in other words, to get the right tone, I think what we'd like to do is to see staff and the applicants or applicants, architects, work together to, to, to make the, the four elevations more consistent with one another to the degree that that is feasible. Is that, is that a wording that everybody can buy? In other, in other words, take another look at it with that, you know, from that point of view.
Four slides are visually consistent.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, that's sort of what I was talking about before, is sort of balancing it a little bit more like the other two. So it's not quite austere on the other two of elevations.
Okay. Then with that, do we have a motion?
I'll move. We approve conditional use permit, UPO 462 and coastal development permit, CPO 523, as amended by the visual consistency discussion that we've just had. Is that good enough?
Works for me.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion? We have a second?
We have a motion and seconds. Who said it first? Richard?
I heard, I heard.
Yeah. Okay, so Richard has the second.
Don't fight over it. Okay. With that then, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Hi.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Hi.
Commissioner Ngrafia.
Yes.
And Chairman Teft.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Yeah, it was, okay, we have no new business for this evening. We have no, no, we actually completed the new business that we had for this evening. We have no unfinished business. So we'll move on to planning commissioner comments. Future agenda items or anything else?
I have a, a comment. The Ocean Protection Council recently, they're having workshop meetings, and the next one's in San Diego and then one in Eureka. For people that are interested, it's the rising sea levels, rising seas in California. And it's the latest science that Ocean Protection Council has the scientific advisory team. And the scientific advisory team of the OPCs, they're, they're getting like international recognition. They're, they're on it. And the OPC And the OPC had requested to get some more science on what is happening with our climate change, regardless of what's going on in Washington. For people that don't know, we, you know, the United States has got off the Paris Agreement, and that's another whole subject. But anyway, I encourage people to get on the OPC, I think the site is opc.ca.gov, and look at the, look at the, they had some key findings, and I'll just read out a couple, there's seven of them, and you can get over them. But the number one finding from this latest science is that the scientific understanding of sea level rise is advancing at a rapid rate. And one of the, several years ago, I had a colleague of mine, Dr. Francis Jeffries, he is the inventor of the Circular Sea Air Program, and he spoke here at one time, and he, his studies were showing that the sea level rise and climate change in regards to carbon and ocean health were accelerating quite a bit faster than the International Panel on Climate Change from the UN. And what they're finding out is that we are going, like you just pointed out earlier, that we are, it's advancing rapidly. And one of the things is, is as a planning commission, as a coastal city, as a California coastal city, we need to be thinking through the eyes of our grandchildren in what they're going to be when they're, when they grow up. You know, the, some of the data that they're showing is like in 20, you know, everything seems pretty consistent until you get about 2050, and then things really happen quickly. So by our addressing the carbon sequestration and carbon issue at this point in time, it's going to change what our grandkids see when they're adults and what we left them. So I feel that, you know, the citizenry and, you know, and the people that are making policy and staffs and, you know, we need to be educating ourselves continuously with the latest science and how quickly it's moving. And California, I'm proud, is a leader in a lot of this, a lot of this stuff, and, yeah. And so I'm kind of, I'm proud of the OPC, I'm proud of California, what they're doing, I mean, moving forward.
I guess I was concerned, we've all received communication from one of our citizens about the issue that we've talked about a few times, about side yard use of accessory adaptations. I'm not sure what the right word for it is, but what's acceptable in the side yards and the scope of, the scale of things that can be put there? And I guess I'm concerned that when I see the scope of the list of projects we have under construction, if we've got a gap in knowledge about what people feel they're allowed to put in side yard setbacks and things like that, I'd want to try to get that in front of the general plan discussion, so that we can, we can talk about what would we be able to put in there that has some teeth at some point? Because I think it involves things like landscape, I think it involves accessory structures, it involves some of these utilitarian kinds of things, that are they acceptable adaptations? Are they, you know, we have things that take into account things like chimneys pretty well, but we don't have things that take into account some of these other things from, everything from the kinds of things that are discussed in the correspondence about, you know, fly poles and different antenna kinds of things. I would imagine the potential for satellite dishes or even photovoltaic arrays in side yard areas. But I also am looking at things like our continued concerns about where we end up with some of these cell tower things in the neighborhoods, too. So there's this whole kind of issue of the non-dwelling built environment inside our setbacks that we have specifically identified as things we're trying to protect the impact of the dwelling and the scale of the dwelling from specifically getting outside that envelope. And we come up with these things that are flaws and the reasoning that everything from trees that get out of control in terms of scale and to some of these accessory kinds of, they're not, they're not buildings, but they're things. And I'm just concerned about that. If we have that flaw in our system, I don't want to see all these houses that we see on our list go forward without some kind of concern for how to control that.
I mean, that's all part of the zoning discussion. I mean, so those things are part of the list of items that we gave to the consultant about things that we're either completely lacking policy on, many instances, that's the case. But one of the, you know, one of the examples is antennas, ham radio antennas, flagpoles. There are some limitations to how we can regulate some of these things, but that's okay. I mean, we do get some say in some of them. And so those are things that are on the list of adds to our zoning code. Also talking about things that we will allow in setbacks and won't, things that'll count as lot coverage, things that won't. You know, can we have covered porches and those types of things? Because those are like features that you might want to have with a house, and yet you can't extend them into a setback with support posts. So then you gotta put angle braces on, and then you, then you end up with something that's smaller than maybe you want, or what have you, and it doesn't really account for some of those things. And so we are going to be picking those up, and we have a lot of, you know, the good, the good thing is, RRM is the sub consultant that's working on the zoning code update, and they're doing zoning codes all over the, all over the state of California right now, several of them, and have finished some more recently. And so they have some pretty up-to-date codes and some pretty interesting ideas about it, and Martha Miller is the lead on that. She's pretty well-versed, and she gets all excited talking about zoning stuff. So I think we're going to have some good conversations, and those will be coming before the planning commission.
Yeah, I know we have got workflow. I just know as it fits in with the workflow, that would be one I'd rather see come up forward sooner than later, just because it seems to be an issue that may be taken advantage of right now by some people. I want to make sure that we have a discussion about it and hear the different positions about what lifestyles people need equipment for, and how that fits in with the community. That's all.
Definitely on the radar, though.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's going to be a complex subject, because, I mean, I think we all, as a community, as a whole, I think we value the large trees and the mature trees that we see throughout the community, and yet those have to be somewhere. You know what I'm saying? They are probably negatively impacting someone, you know, even though they're a benefit to the community as a whole. So, I mean, it may be a topic where you have to consider location, topography, I mean, a lot of, a lot of factors, rather than just sort of a blanket statement, especially with regard to vegetation and trees.
Do you, do you think it behooves to maybe agendize a discussion?
No. We have a, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. We have a process that this is going through, and we've been in this process for a year. I'm not going to change it. I have timelines that we have to make. I mean, we need to get the work done, so absolutely we need to talk about these things, but we do have a timeline, and we have deliverables based on grant funding that we have, and if we don't hit them, we're going to owe several hundred thousand dollars to the Coastal Commission and/or Ocean Protection Council, because we owe them both deliverables. We're mostly done with the Ocean Protection Council stuff, though, so we've probably given them most of our information, but we're still on the Coastal Commission side of things. But, and we're just now getting into the policy discussion. We're running parallel tracks right now, so you will, on occasion, see stuff that's general plan policy-related, and then next meeting, you'll have stuff that's zoning code-related. And so you'll be seeing things come along with that. We were, we're going through the outlines that we have, draft outlines for both right now, what the policy is going to look like, what format it's in, what order things are in right now. We're looking at the drafts on that. And we'll be finalizing the administrative drafts for release and review by the GPAC and Planning Commission, coming up here pretty quick. So you're going to start seeing it, and then, you know, you're going to start seeing a lot of policy stuff come at you, too, for discussion. So that's all, that's all coming up here pretty quick.
But Scott, in this particular area, this particular topic, at least with regard to hedges and fences and vehicles and, not flagpoles, no, and I forget what the third one, we have a lot of data on this. Is that something we'll be able to?
That specific discussion, we're going to have separately, because we owe a report back to the planning commission, back to the city council from the planning commission on direction for that. I've been kicking it down the road, because I haven't had time to bring it forward. Quite honestly, that's, that's the case. We're running on all these tracks right now, and starting in about three weeks, we're going to start our implementation of our project tracking system. So that's going to be time-consuming and a tough, a tough get from staff, but we're going to be doing it. And when we get on the other end of it, it'll be much better and much more of a transparent process for folks to check in and see what's happening. So only point, only reason I point that out is, we have so many things going on at one time right now, it's difficult to hit them all, and some things are suffering as a result. And this is one of the things that's been falling down the calendar, just because I haven't had time to get at it, to write the staff report. And it's sitting here, and I just keep moving it meetings. And then we're going to cancel the meeting coming up here on the 4th. We're not going to have that one, it's holiday, so it doesn't make it any better. But I'm hoping to get it done, you know, probably in August-ish. That's when that item would be coming forward. And I seem to have a window I'm going to be able to hit there in between general plan and zoning stuff. You know, can't have all of those things, plus all the general plan and zoning code stuff on here for you, it's just the meetings would be too long, so.
So have you considered cloning yourself?
I'm working, people think it's funny that I've taken three days off, so, how are you doing that? But anyway.
Okay. Then we'll move on to community director, development director comments.
The one thing I did want to bring up, and I'll mention it at our next meeting on the 20th, is we are canceling the meeting on the 4th. I'm not scheduling an extra meeting as a result of that. We could have had a special meeting, but I'm going to save special meetings for later on down the road, because we may need them for the general plan and LCP, and it gives you a little bit of a break, because I can see you getting a lot more work as we move forward in those processes, because not only do you have to do the work of applications coming forward for development, you're going to be doing the policy work as well, and so your plates are going to get kind of, you know, the workload's going to increase on the part of what you're doing. It's all good, and all good and interesting, and I hopefully, something that's a little bit different for you to work on, but it is, does take kind of a while to wade through it. So I try to be cognizant of what the agendas look like, so we can get through things, and we're not sitting here at 11 o'clock at night, so. That's, that's all I had. Then again, I'll remind you about the 4th closure, or the cancellation of that meeting again on the 20th.
Very good. With that, then, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be here 6:00 PM, June 20th, 2017. Thank you very much.